Call the September fourth city council meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, you give us the prayer, pledge and fact of the day, please sir.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day, on September the third seventeen seventy seven, the American flag is said to have flown in battle for the first time during the Revolutionary War skirmish at the Battle of Iron Hill near Delaware. Patriot General William Maxwell ordered the starved and strike down a raid as a detachment of his infantry and cavalry met with advanced guard of British and Harrison troops. The patriots were defeated and forced to retreat at General George Washington's main force near Brandon Wine Creek in Pennsylvania. Fact of the day.
Thank you.
All right, let me read the decorum statement. Welcome to the public meeting of the city council of the city of Apopka. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. The city council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters that may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon evening, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information that we presented to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the city council not to individual commissioners, staff or members of the public. The council and the city's staff encourage constructive criticism, however, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities and statements as to personality. Any violation of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warnings, including warning of for trespass. If violation persists after such warnings, violators may be ruled from council chambers. Okay, with that, we've got a set of minutes, look for a motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We've got five consent agenda items, or anything of either Cliff or Jacob, any changes?
No changes.
We have five consent agenda items, anybody need to pull to either items, have not looked for motion to approve?
Can you just say for number five, I mean, I know it was explained to us individually during the agenda review. If I guess Chief McKinley, if he wants to kind of just touch on that for the public's information.
For?
On number five.
Okay, there's more than just?
Yeah, I know, but just one, universal protection services?
Okay, sure.
Just for that.
Chief, real quick.
Mayor Commissioners, good afternoon, Mike McKinley, Chief of Police. That contract is just to provide security for city hall, remove the police officer back in to patrol and just remove the remove the officer and provide for private security. It's a cost savings to the city and will still provide a secure facility for our employees.
Okay.
Anything else?
All right, thank you. Okay. Look for motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Wild Oaks Platte, Bobby.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Applicant is requesting approval of a plat for Wild Oaks. The property is located west of State Road four twenty nine, south of Kelly Park Road and east of Golden Jim Road. It's approximately one hundred fifty-two acres in size and that purpose of the plat is to establish stormwater tracks and create nine lots. Plat is consistent with the approved major development plan, construction site plan and with Florida statute one seventy-seven, which is plating. Development Review Committee recommends approval. Recommended motion this afternoon, also the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Recommended motion is approval. If you have any questions, myself and applicant are here.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for Wild Oaks.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Crossroads at Kelly Park one B plat.
This is plat for Crossroads at Kelly Park Phase one B. Property is located south of Onditch Road and east of Round Lake Road, approximately twenty-nine acres in size. Purposes of the plat is to create one hundred forty residential lots as well as alleys and park tracks and easements. As you can see here, plat's consistent with the major development plan, construction site plan with Florida statute one seventy-seven, which is plating. Development Review Committee recommends approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommend approval. Recommended motion this afternoon is approval. Myself and applicant are here for questions.
Any questions for Bobby?
Uh, just one, is it a hundred and forty or a hundred and seventy-five?
Uh, one hundred and forty, does it say one seventy-five in the report?
It says one seventy-five.
Okay, yeah. It would be the one seventy-five then, apologize for the typo.
Okay.
All right. Anybody from the public who should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion, sure. Well, come on down.
I would just like to ask how much?
Name and address from the record, please ma'am.
Sorry, Nadine James, Apopka, Suncrest Drive, down the street.
Okay.
I would like to know how much of these new developments are going to include conservation areas? Because it seems like it's just straight up build, 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 concrete, concrete, concrete. So if there's no conservation areas, the city residents and the city or the people that live in those neighborhoods, all they're gonna do is complain about the bears, the bears, the raccoons, the coyotes or, okay, well, if you have no conservation areas, you're either gonna have wild animals in your neighborhood and you're probably gonna have flooding issues because there's no natural environment left. So where I live, I'm lucky because I'm up a hill, but the people across the street, they have to watch their house because it could be flooded and I'm in an old neighborhood. So these new developments, where they flatten everything and it's nothing but concrete and pavement? That's my concern is that we're destroying the natural areas and we're not putting back native plants or anything like that, native trees, nothing.
All right, I'll have them answer, anybody else want to speak this? Richard, why don't you come down and talk about the drainage and then Bobby, if you'll talk about the percentage for open space that is required?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Richard Earp, City Engineer. Uh, so the developer, the all the developers that develop in the city needs to get, need to get a permit from the state, from the St. John's River Water Management District. That would show that there's not more drainage leaving their site in the, depending on where you are, either a twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm or a hundred year, twenty-four hour storm. And they're required to treat that water so it soaks into the ground and provides water quality treatment for all the new developments. So the city issues a permit after we check that and so does the St. John's River Water Management District.
Thank you, and then Bobby, if you'll answer the open space part of that question?
So this property is in the Kelly Park Form Based Code area. It's in the neighborhood transition, this is part of an overall development of the Crossroads at Kelly Park, which has been approved for some time now. This is a plat, so this is just the recording of the lots so they can sell the lots and start building of the houses out there. Minimum of twenty percent open space is required in this transition zone, so this plat meets this, this is like I said, just a recordingation of lots.
Okay, that answer your questions ma'am?
What is the percentage that's actually being?
More than twenty percent.
More than twenty?
Yes ma'am.
The green areas outside?
Believe the applicant is here, if you want to kind of get up and address the open space and the construction of your project.
Hi, my name's Genevieve Labuda with Paulus and Bennett, two six zero two East Livingston Street. I'm the applicant for the project, not the developer. Um, this particular plat, what you're seeing is a phase of the project. All of the open space tracks, conservation tracks, park tracks, amenity tracks are part of a different plat. Um, this is just to subdivide the lot, so you won't see it specifically on this plat that they're approving today, but if you looked at the overall the overall project plans for Crossroads at Kelly Park, you would be able to see all of those open space areas.
Ma'am, did you give Susan your email address? Did you give? Yeah, if you'll give it to her, I'll make sure that the developer gets the information to us and I'll get that to you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for the Crossroads at Kelly Park Phase one B. So moved, got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Bronson Peak Phase two A.
This is a plat for Bronson Peak, Bronson Peak Phase two A, this is part of the overall ridge development located off of Boy Scout Road and west of Galway Boulevard. This portion of the property is approximately fourteen acres in size and it's plating to create eighty-eight lots as well as right of way and alley tracks. Plat is consistent with the approved major development plan, construction site plan with Florida statute one seventy-seven, which is plating. Development Review Committee recommends approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval. Recommended motion is approval of the plat. Myself and applicant are here for questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for Bronson Peak Phase two A.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Floridian Town Center Multi Family Phase one?
Applicant submitted a major development plan for consideration of development consisting of three hundred and twelve multifamily units and Ted buildings that are three stories each. This is in Phase one of Floridian Town Center Plan Development. I believe the board is familiar of the location of the property, that this is a fourteen point acre, fourteen point seven acre portion of the development. It's located by the State Road four twenty-nine entrance ramp. Access of this site will be via Floridian Town Center Boulevard and Kiowa Avenue. Consistent with the PD master plan, a total of four hundred ninety-three parking spaces are provided on site. Fifteen of those are accessible, thirty are electric car parking charging stations. Consistent with PD master plan, stormwater retention is provided in the center of the site. These are architectural elevations provided by the applicant, show what the buildings will look like. Development Review Committee recommends approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval. Recommended motion is approval. Myself and applicant are here for questions.
All right, any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public who should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the major development plan for the Floridian Town Center Multi Family Phase one. Okay, so moved, got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and fifty-two.
Ordinance number three thousand and fifty-two. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from county rural to city residential, very low suburban for a property located at fourteen hundred West Kelly Park Road, owned by Michael A. Gentles and Desmond W. Street, comprising five point zero six acres more or less, providing for separability, conflicts and ineffectivity.
No changes, okay? Anybody from the public who should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and fifty-two.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number three thousand and fifty-three?
Ordinance number three thousand and fifty-three. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, changing the zoning from T Transitional to RSF one A Residential Single Family Estate District for certain real property generally located at fourteen hundred West Kelly Park Road, owned by Michael A. Gentles, Desmond W. Street, comprising of five point zero six acres more or less, providing for separability, conflicts and ineffectivity.
Any changes? Anybody from the public who should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve, adopt ordinance number three thousand and fifty-three.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and fifty-eight.
Ordinance number three thousand and fifty-eight. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from county low medium to industrial for certain real property owned by SFL Partners LLC and JFJ Real Estate Investments LLC, located north of Fourth Street, east of Bradshaw Road and west of Hawthorne Avenue, comprising one point nine seven acres more or less, providing for separability, conflicts and ineffectivity.
Any changes? Anybody from the public who should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand and fifty-eight. Okay, I guess, yeah, so moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and fifty-nine?
Ordinance number three thousand and fifty-nine. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county R two residential district to IL light industrial for certain real property owned by SFL Partners and LLC and JFJ Real Estate Investments LLC, located north of Fourth Street, east of Bradshaw Road and west of Hawthorne Avenue, comprising one point nine seven acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, separability, conflicts and ineffectivity.
No changes, okay? Anybody from the public who should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and fifty-nine?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and sixty-four?
Ordinance number three thousand and sixty-four. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the city of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from residential medium and commercial to institutional public for properties located at nine nine six South Orange Blossom Trail and one thousand South Orange Blossom Trail, owned by Trinity Baptist Church of Apopka Inc., comprising six point nine nine acres more or less, providing for conflicts and ineffectivity.
Okay. No changes, okay? Anybody from the public who should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and sixty-four?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and sixty-five?
Ordinance number three thousand and sixty-five. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from CC Community Commercial and RSF one B Residential Single Family Large Lot to O Office for certain real property generally located at nine nine six South Orange Blossom Trail and one thousand South Orange Blossom Trail, owned by Trinity Baptist Church of Apopka Inc., comprising of six point nine nine acres more or less, providing for separability, conflicts and ineffectivity.
Any change, okay? Anybody from the public who should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and sixty-five?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and seventy-one?
Ordinance number three thousand and seventy-one. In ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Orchid Estates Community Home Owners Association, Mega GNG LLC, Jacob Snavely, four forty-six twenty-five Chandler Road LLC, Matthew and Deborah Shaw, Daphne Martin, generally located south of West Kelly Park Road and west of Jason Dwelly Parkway, comprising of twenty-eight point five four acres more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, separability, conflicts and ineffectivity.
Any changes, okay? Anybody from the public who should speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number three thousand and seventy-one? Some, got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen?
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka establishing a schedule of fees to provide funding for a stormwater utility program, adopting the non-adverbal assessment role and providing for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Richard Earp, the City Engineer. Uh, this is our annual non-adverbal stormwater assessment. Uh, it's in accordance with the study that a council approved last year, the Stormwater Utility Rate Study. This is just the next year in the cycle. We did advertise the, uh, the meeting. There was a Scrivener's error on the, on the first two advertisements, on the top of the sheet, it said sixty dollars, it should have been sixty-five. The calculation on the bottom of the sheet was correct on all of the advertisements. And so the recommended motion today is to establish the non-adverbal assessment rate based on the study and hold over for second reading on September eighteenth.
Okay, any questions for Richard on this one?
Does the, the errors that are within this hearing or this notice, does that invalidate this at all or does it need to be re-noticed in any capacity to update and reflect correctly? Thank you.
Anybody from the public who should speak on this resolution? Okay, not, look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's hope that's him, no, it isn't. Can we jump down to resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, waiting on Josh to get here? Uh, Blanche, can you?
Yes ma'am, if you don't mind. This is resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you, good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Blanche Sherman, Finance Director. Um, this is budget amendment number nine, we only have two items, the total amount is one million five seventy-four, three sixty-two. The first item includes the fire and police retirement plans, these are contributions from the state that we get and we have to remit those immediately to empower to put into the pension plan. For po, nope, for fire, it was four sixty-two, six twenty-seven, and for police is eight hundred eleven dollars, seven thirty-five. And this is a budget amendment to show the revenue coming in and out. The next item is a hundred and fifty thousand, we're increasing the budget for the Northwest Recreation Complex Inclusive Playground Project. Uh, we discussed this back in twenty twenty-three that we would pull funds from the Impact Fee Fund, this is Recreation Impact Fee to support that project, the project is now ready to go and so we're making that amendment. That's it.
Okay, any questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Still waiting on Josh, okay. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three?
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, establishing fiscal year twenty twenty-five rate schedules pertaining to the city of Apopka water use charges and deposits, wastewater use charges and deposits, distributed wastewater treatment service or system uses, charges and deposits and reclaim water rates and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Susan. In accordance with city ordinance two four seven five, the city council established the rates for water wastewater reclaim services. Um, currently the rates, we originally proposed to increase the rates about forty percent, forty percent and fifteen percent with reclaim. Uh, we did have a workshop and we reduced that and we came to twenty-three point seven five. So that's the proposed rate increase for now and that's what's reflected in the tentative budget that we'll be talking about this evening.
Any questions for? Mr. Sherman?
So, um, I did receive a phone call and, um, what, what they were asking with the increase of the water rates? What did? My understanding is that some of the meters in the city, a third of the meters are not functioning, is that correct?
We do have some problems with a lot of the meters in the city.
Do we have anybody from the water department here, from utility?
I don't think so.
Well, I mean, Richard.
I guess Richard wants to answer.
And then, um, and an update on the back flows, where are we with that?
Richard Earp, Public Services, we do have a lot of meters that are, are not functioning right now, we're working on that, it's a systematic program. It's something we hadn't worked on for many years and we're trying to get ahead of. Same thing with the backflow preventers, we are making progress, I don't have the exact numbers on this box today to give you.
Was that removed from the budget to keep the maintenance for the, um, for the water meters? Is there a budget, a line item for that budget?
Yes, it is.
And we don't have a number of how many meters are not, are not functioning?
I mean, uh, probably, I can't exactly say they have, um, they're not functioning for various reasons, but, um, maybe six thousand.
So.
But we're also, but one of the things we are, we are getting estimated reads.
Yeah.
We're, we're, it's not that we're not getting any money, they're.
Not the revenue, but.
No, we are getting revenue, it's just not.
The question is.
It's a timing thing.
That we're raising the water rates in order to, um, fund. But we are not, from what I understand from citizens, the citizens that are concerned is that we're putting the burden on the city taxpayers to raise the water rates, but we have over a third that's not. have over a third that's not functioning. And so how are we going to?
Because we are still getting revenue, even though they're not functioning, because we are still getting revenue, even though they are not reading from estimated amount.
We're just getting well-reduced revenue, 'cause I, you've worked with a resident that I've helped, that, yeah, that it, they got a bill for twenty-seven hundred dollars once their meter replaced, so.
So how are we addressing the six thousand residents that are getting an estimated bill, and all of a sudden we're raising the water rates? And then, um, where, six thousand will get the actual, uh, I guess, bill that they should have been paying? How are we addressing that?
Well, as I explained to Commissioner Nestor with the estimated billing, when they true it up, say, they get billed for ten thousand gallons per month, and then once they do, they get the meter fixed, they start reading, they give them fifty thousand. So once it reads at the fifty thousand, it charges them at the higher rate. What we do is a one-time adjustment to charge them at the lower rate, as though they had been paying all along. So it's a timing issue. We're getting some revenue. We're doing an estimate. The system automatically does an estimate, like if your August bill, if you had a reading last August, but this August you don't have a reading, they would use the consumption that you had last August. It's a twelve-month rolling, um, estimate process. But when you true it up, that's when you get the money back over a period of time. It's a timing issue.
Do we have a timeline of when those six thousand will be?
That's public service.
A thousand this year, a thousand next year, a thousand?
That's public service. I, I, I can't answer that question.
So is anyone here from public services?
I can't answer that. So here's, that's the problem. I mean, that, you, you look at the one resident I helped, twenty-seven hundred dollars times six thousand. I mean, that's most of our shortfall right there, so.
It's, it's some revenue, but it's not to that level.
No, agreed, but, and then residents are obviously shocked and, and dismayed that they are now having to pay this increase because of faulty equipment that we're not maintaining properly.
A public service is not here to address that question. I mean, we're meeting internally, we're gonna establish a meeting where we meet every month to do what we can to try to address the problem.
Can we get someone from public services? 'Cause I, I don't wanna vote on this until I get at least some answer from public services, 'cause there is a concern. I've gotten.
Yeah, again, this is not a new problem, but, okay.
No, but I think too, that I assume there's a few residents in here that wanna speak about this, it would be nice to have, there's quite, quite a bit, that would like to also hear from our Public Works Director to be able to answer some of these, so they have some.
Sure. Are you trying to get someone here from public services, or?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a quite a few, most of the residents are here to discuss this, so definitely need some questions answered.
Okay. So how are we doing? We gonna hold off on this one until?
Yeah, but let's keep the public comment. We'll, we'll.
You wanna do public comment now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And we'll, we can, we can.
Then we can come up to them.
Yeah, all right, come on down.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Um, my name is Ian Kimbrel, I reside in Magnolia Park Estates. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Homeowners Association. Uh, when we got this letter here, we were extremely shocked at this, I believe last year, we were all charged the money to install these devices on our water lines. The letter at the bottom here, more importantly, says that in order to ensure protection of our fresh water supply, it is necessary for everyone, the city included, to resort, uh, use resources efficiently. On the back of this letter, blah, blah, blah. I will tell you that, uh, back in August fifteenth, uh, I ended up taking video footage because the city came out to purge our water lines on the day before. They left the water main open for twenty-four hours a day, for at least three days, before shutting it off, and they flooded our retention pond, which also increased the mosquito problem in my neighborhood. And in this day and age, when we know that everything is costing more money due to, hm, we all know what, inflation and everything else, and everybody's money is, is getting a little tighter, to get a letter in the mail that said that you're gonna raise our rates forty percent is absolutely preposterous. And then obviously, you guys will lower that down to twenty-three point seven percent. But again, thousands and thousands of gallons of water flooded my retention pond. Nothing was done. Yesterday, we talk about conservation, I have another water meter here that is pouring water into my retention pond. I had to call the city on this one yesterday to get them to come out and turn this one off that has been flooded for two days straight. So I'm sorry if my frustration might be sounding in my voice, but to hear that I'm paying more money because you guys wanna conserve water, yet I have thousands of gallons of water flooding my community and causing a mosquito problem, and a problem for my, uh, owner's, uh, pockets. I mean, you guys got a bit better than that. I just wanted to come and voice my opinion. I normally don't get involved in things like this, but being that this is talking about an increase for water conservation, and I walk my dogs every morning, and I'm watching thousands of gallons of water flood my community. Like, come on. I'm sorry, but that's, I just wanted to voice my opinion, and I'm sure there's other people here that have something to say, so that's all I have to add.
Can you tell me what community that is?
Magnolia Park Estates. And the dates was August fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, that the fire main was left open for twenty-four hours a day.
It was the, the fire hydrant?
Yes, sir, I have the pictures right here with the long blue tub cord going to it, and it stayed open for at least three days, night and day. And my, my retention pond, as you can see, is also flooded.
I, I think the first one that was, we, we did it on purpose, I think there was.
Well, no, sir, you guys do this constantly. You come out and purge our lines, and they cut every other one off and forgot this one open. The president of the, uh, Board of Directors and myself, as the Vice President of the Board of Directors, had to call you guys to remind you that you forgot one open for three days straight. It should not have been let open for three days, night and day. That's entirely too much. The other ones were cut off, and the equipment was retrieved. When the president called about this one, whoever he spoke to was dumbfounded and denied it, first of all, and then they had to have an argument to get him to come out here and find out who passed the buck, who dropped the ball, or whatever. But again, it's either here nor there, it happened. Okay? But to have an increase and have our pockets hurting, because you guys don't have right working equipment, or whatever the case may be, is insane. And I just wanted to have my opinion stated.
Leroy Bell, twenty-three zero eight Blue Meadows Court. Uh, I spoke to Commissioner Nestor about, uh, the new development that's coming in on Vineyard, uh, right across from Lust Road, right across from, uh, Clear Lake Estate. Uh, this, this group went in and tapped into the main water line on Blue Meadows Court on my street, and it was told to us that it had a meter that, once they fill their tanks up, this is the way that they tabulate, and the city charged them for water. But just like the gentleman just spoke, these people, once they fill up their truck, the, the, uh, the line is still open. Water's just flooding out. The city is charging people. And the reason that I'm standing here now is simply because what I keep harping about, this administration has said several times, from this diocese, that they, the people in South Apopka that get water from the city, they gonna have to step up so they can help us with the B map. Do anybody remember that? Out of these six thousand people, how many people in South Apopka that it's affecting to the derelict of duty of this city and putting more charges on people that you don't wanna even annex into the city? No matter how much you move something to the back, no matter how much you cut off a fee to keep people from seeing what's going on at the city, you can't hide. What happened in the dark gonna come to the light.
My name is Donald Bynum, uh, forty-three oh eight Caledonia Avenue, Apopka. I'm glad to hear the things that have been said, and I have the same situation as far as, uh, this increase. We can't afford it. Citizens, and I'm sure each one of you are citizens also, 'cause we're all in this same boat together. We all swimming in a losing battle. But to have this type of increase upon us at this, such a time as this, is ridiculous. There's things that I've heard from a couple of the gentlemen already that I had no knowledge of. So I am so glad that I came here today to hear about the other problems that Apopka is having. All right? So, increase, for us, is out of the question. We could barely make it out here now. People are struggling, people are losing their homes, they can't pay their homeowner's insurance. All these things are affecting us, and even more, even up in Washington, DC, the struggles that they're having up there, it's affecting everybody in this country, and you included. Now, if you got more money than the rest of us, um, you may not feel the pinch, but each and every one of us feel that same pinch when we go to the grocery store. When we gotta look at a, a statement saying that the bills are gonna increase forty percent, and I'm like, what? I've never heard of such a thing. Whose fault is it? We need help. We need help. And it don't look like you guys are trying to help us. I've been paying an estimated bill for at least four to five months, and I called today and talked to Public Works, and they say, well, we'll get to it. They haven't been able to come out and check the meters to see if they're working or not. You know, and I'm like, I said, that don't make any sense, but I can understand the backlog for not having enough people to do the work. Because you see that at the restaurants, now hiring, now hiring, everywhere you go, now hiring. Nobody seem like they wanna work, but what we do have, it's not getting done. It's not getting done in a timely manner. So that's my situation right now, and this is, I think, uh, we're gonna have another meeting, isn't there another meeting at six PM? I'll be at that one too, 'cause I got something to say about that also. So thank you for your.
It's five, five fifteen, it's the five fifteen.
Five fifteen? Okay.
Oliver McKimmy, three six oh three Golden Gem Road. We have a severe problem with the Public Works Department. They won't answer questions, and here's a question. We just admitted that all that water was dumped because we were purging the lines. If we have to purge lines, what contaminants were in those lines? Was it reported to the FDP? Why is it that when we asked the Public Works Department why they were purging the lines, they refused to answer us? Should I be drinking water if I don't know what's in it? Should you not be willing to tell me what the contaminant is in those pipes, so that I know if I'm using city water? If I go into McDonald's, or go into any of the, the places where I have coffee, what are they using? They're using city water. Coca-Cola uses city water to bulk things, so that when you contaminate our water, you contaminate the national water supply, because we supply products all over, all over the states. So it's not just a stateside issue, it's a federal issue when you contaminate our water. And you should be prepared to tell us what contaminants was in it. Was it because you were drilling deeper wells? Now, why are we drilling deeper wells down into the aquifers? It's because we're short of water. Why are we short of water? Because your infrastructure sucks. Mayor, don't smile at me. You want decorum in this meeting, don't laugh at me. Okay? The facts that I bring here are relevant. If you're ignorant enough not to understand them, that's your problem, but we have a problem with infrastructure, and for two years I've been bringing it to you. What contaminants were, were, were we trying to, to remove? Did the F E D P, were they notified? Because I've asked them, they haven't got back to me yet. There's too much happening in this city that nobody wants to be accountable for. So we know that when these meters are out of action, what can happen? We can have leakages all over the place. When we have leakages all over the place, it's not only the residents who's gonna pay for it, it's us, because you can't supply the water, you're gonna increase budget recharges on us, so either the people who aren't using water get charged. Everybody's held accountable, except the man that laughed at me there. The man who refuses to allow my videos to be played. But, hey, listen, we have a solution to that. We started a website called cityofapopka dot press, and everything that you refuse to allow here, I publish, including when you stand like that, and there's no reason for it. Okay? So let's stop laughing at me. If you wanna get personal, I can get personal as well. There's no decorum in this place. Today, I asked for, for information so that I could address the meeting and challenge the validity of, of what's happened here today. City refused to acknowledge that. Where's the decorum when the city won't answer a question that's legitimately required to answer? I'm tired of this mess.
Well, I'm in Plymouth. They rezoned it to Apopka, City of Apopka. They rezoned Plymouth, Florida to Apopka, Florida.
Can you give us your name and address, please, ma'am?
Lisa Likes, thirty-three fifty Janet Street, Apopka, Florida, three two seven one two. Oh, I just got out from work, uh, retirement, trying to get my retirement, but, uh, and I live in my home by myself, and I used to be with Orange County before they gave it to Apopka. And when I was with Orange County, I never had a bill over thirty dollars. It always was twenty-six, twenty-eight, and changed, never thirty, or thirty-one, or whatever. But wow. Coming with you all, City of Apopka, it's like eleven dollars worth of water I use a month, but the sewer, what is sewage? What is that? I don't even have a washing and dryer. So I don't know, what is the sewage? What is that? The toilet? It's just me, but I do flush it after every use. But wow, it's ridiculous, y'all. And then I've been struggling all this year, and I thank, uh, you all for helping me, you know, through my struggle of keeping my water on, but I got disconnected, and they charging me seventy dollars to get it cut back on. That's a lot of money. I just had to come and say something, you know? It's ridiculous. What I'm gonna do? What I'm gonna do? It's, it's terrible. When I see my water usage, eleven dollars in the sewage, twenty-six, twenty-eight. Wow, come on. Help us. Help me. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Tricia Morris.
Speak up.
Tricia Morris. Nice to see you again there, Nelson. My address is seventeen ten Fairhaven Court. I have not been at these meetings since moving here.
Please speak up, just so we can get this for the record.
Okay. Can you hear me better? Would you like me to repeat everything? All right, let's try it. I'm gonna use my yelling voice. My name is Tricia Morris. I reside at seventeen ten Fairhaven Court. I am here today because of this notification that I received. I love Apopka. I can't say everything is terrible, there are really wonderful things about Apopka, and if you have anything to do with the wonderful things that I know Apopka has to offer, I say thank you. I am here because this is a concern to me. When I see the sewer rates are propo, are proposed to increase by forty percent, that dear lady said she flushes after every use. I'll be honest, guys, I don't flush after every use because it's so high, and I've no, I've been told that if you don't flush constantly, then you could save some water. There are times when I'd like to invite people over, but I have to think, if I invite people over for a gathering, that means they're going to flush the sewer more frequently, and it means that I am not gonna be able to pay my bill, or if I do pay the bill, then maybe I'm not gonna have some food to eat, or there's some, some essential that I'll have to cut back on. So I have to factor all those things, right? Um, then, that's not the only increase this document states. It states that the garbage rates are proposed to increase by ten percent, and, um, it says the city will consider the adoption, okay? And, and if that was the only thing that concerns me, when I saw this, and I'm not, I'm just gonna address it a little bit, that the, the tax rates are supposed to increase for us. And they said that if your tax rate and taxes for this year increase, it's gonna increase from three thousand. If your tax rate and taxes for this year increase, it's gonna increase from three thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-three cents. To three thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. And I think about the fact, I'm like, I wish I had a forty percent, um, raise. I wish I can ha- I had raises. That could allow me to be able to kind of work this out. But I don't. Um, I work for the state of Florida, and if you know anything about the state of Florida, the state isn't really generous. When it comes to, uh, you know, paying their workers, you know, the other benefits are okay, but at the end of the day. We have to eat, you know, we have to, we wanna maintain our homes, we wanna pay our HOAs on time. And we want light and we wanna have water. And so I'm just asking that you truly reconsider this. That raising something of forty percent when, I don't, I think I speak for most people, most of us don't get raises that are forty percent. Uh, uh, you know, increase of forty percent. It's alarming, it's concerning, it's, it's depressing. And I think of, I think of the families. In this community, um, you know, a, a lot of the middle-class families might be there, and maybe lower income might, might be there. But I think about the fact that they must be looking at this and thinking. I, I, if they were considering having another child, they might have to reconsider that. Because how do you pay? How, you just can't. So I just want you to consider that. That's actually affecting people's ability to wanna even procreate. If they're, they're thinking rationally, you can't pay all these bills. You just can't.
Thank you, ma'am.
So thank you.
Anybody else from public? No, no, sir, you'd only get one chance.
Okay, well, I just wanted to ask about the impact these from all these land developments.
That'll be the five fifteen one, yes. Ladies first.
Nikki McGuire, City of Apopka resident. Um, the math is just not math. Um, in twenty-twenty-two. Minimum wage went, and I'm talking the state of Florida. Eleven dollars an hour, that was a ten percent increase. Twenty-twenty-three, minimum wage went to twelve dollars. That was a nine point zero nine percent increase. Twenty-twenty-four, it only went up by eight point three-three percent to thirteen dollars. Twenty-twenty-five, it's expected to go to fourteen dollars an hour, which is a seven point six-nine percent. There are a lot of people within the city living on minimum wage. I know some people say everything's going up, that's the way it is. However, if everything's going up and you have people. Income is not going up, then you guys are pushing towards homelessness issue. And then what will happen then? Where are these people gonna go? Yes. They're gonna have one plus in their corner. They wouldn't have any utility bills. But is that the way you work hard all your life to end up homeless? So I'm pleading with you guys, yes, things have to go up because, yeah, life. However, even though you guys went down from forty percent, it's still not good enough. I spent a lot of time talking with a lot of residents within the City of Apopka. If you do the math at thirteen dollars an hour, and then you have average rent seventeen hundred dollars, these people are already. Beyond broke. A job has become J O B, just above broke. Can you guys please look out for us? We elected each one of you. Up there to do a job, to help protect us. Can you guys please consider that with the increase, with everything? If you're not increasing at forty percent paid, your expenses should not. You guys speak about budget. I attend the budget meetings. Uh, when I cannot be in person, I watch it on YouTube. The basis of a budget is to balance it, income and expenses. But for us, now look at it from an employer's standpoint. You know what we employers gonna be forced to do? If minimum wage keeps going up. But we have to keep employees, that means for us to balance our books, we have to cut their hours. So even if we budget to pay you two hundred a week. And minimum wage goes up, guess what? We still gonna pay you two hundred a week, but you're gonna be working less, so our books are balanced. But now your expenses are higher. Can you make it? No, you cannot. So the same we're asking you guys, consider the residents of Apopka. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Rob Josephson. I'm in Oak Hill Reserve. Uh, usually don't come to these things, but when I did get this letter, uh, it prompted me to do so. Uh, apologize for not wearing a tie, but, uh, I've retired since I last saw you at the Millball and last saw you at IHOP. Um, bottom line is, uh, you know, I looked at these rate increases. And I may be remiss in my thinking, cuz at forty years old, I don't think, you know, clearly sometimes. But I believe that we also had a rate increase within the past year, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct or incorrect?
E- each year.
Yeah. And, and it seems to keep going up. Um, as it's been, you know, indicated, you know, there was a forty percent increase, which somebody said that it's down to twenty-three or thirty-two percent, whatever it may be. And fifteen percent, and it said the sewer is going up by forty percent. The garbage rates being increased by ten percent wasn't even on this letter. So I don't know what that amount is. Uh, your differences for residential is a three hundred dollar and sixty-three difference between your existing proposed rate. Seven dollars and seventy-two cents difference in residential, uh, on the sewer rate. And a dollar thirty-six difference in reclaim. So, uh, I graduated from FSU, so I'm not the best at math, but that comes out somewhere around thirteen dollars. Uh, that may not seem a lot to you, but then go ahead and add on your garbage, whichever that's gonna be. So let's say it ends up being fifteen. Where my concern is, I look at this in a little different way. Uh, that being that this city has been building and building and building residential. For the past eight years. It's not what we bought into seventeen years ago. Mayor Nelson, you've been here longer than that, so you know what I'm talking about, okay? And i- it's not what we bought into. I don't know if this city is trying to become the next Altamont Springs. I mean, maybe that's what you're attempting to do. Uh, but I don't think you're keeping up with the infrastructure, because I don't see these roads changing. I see a lot of single-lane roads each way. And I don't know how people are gonna be getting around, but that's, you know, that's neither here or there, just food for thought down the road. Um, unless I buy a helicopter. Uh, but in any event. Where I'm going with this is you've built, and you've built, and you've built. You allow people to come in and say, let's build another community here, let's build another community there. So what I'm saying is, when you raised the rate last year. And you're getting all these homes being built, okay? And they're paying for the water. I'm sure you're not supplying the water for free or at cost. Obviously, the city is making some money on it. So with the revenue you're gonna get from the new houses being built. I- isn't there an offset here where you don't need to raise the rate? That's, that's what I'm looking at. Granted, you're gonna have to supply more water, but you're also gonna get more revenue. And your revenue is going to pay the cost of the water, but it's also gonna provide the city with revenue. So you're getting more revenue, so why are you raising the rate? This is where my question is. And I'm not gonna raise my blood pressure, because I don't believe in yelling at people, cuz you don't get anywhere with that. But the bottom line is, something is wrong here. You're increasing it every year. And this place is getting built and built and built. I go up four-twenty-nine to go into, into Sanford. I'm amazed of what's going on out that way. You know, so you're not. I hate to say it, but I don't think you're hurting on revenue. So I'm trying to figure out why you are wanting another rate increase. You know, it, it just doesn't seem fair. You know, uh, uh, the percentages you guys are looking at, even if you're talking twenty-three or thirty-two, and add on your fifteen, add on your ten, add on your whatever percentages they are. So I just figured I, I lay it out there. Like I said, I don't yell and jump up and down and scream, you know, it doesn't help anybody.
Thank you.
Sylvester Hall, thirty-nine-one Roland Hills Lane. I wanna say, uh, welcome to the newcomers. I have a saying that. Our nation is in a national crisis because too many good people are standing by watching bad things happen. And being completely silent about it. It's time for us to stand up. So welcome for a first time, and don't let this be your last time, please. But I wanna take you back to, um. A few city council meetings ago, where we talked about staffing. And we was getting the budget prepared. And, uh, one of my neighbors, Mr. Rod Olson. He called, he approached each department head, and he asked, he asked a simple question. Do you have what you need to do your job effectively and keep the citizens of Apopka safe? All department head answered yes. And I know that's not true from sitting here at the city council meetings. The only gentleman that said no, and I respect him for that, is the city administrator. He said no. So how can your department heads come up here and say, yes, I have what I need? The city administrator just got here and looking at things, saying, no, we don't have what we need. Now, for you newcomers. This may be a surprise to you, what's going on, but it's not a surprise to me. Because we don't have the staffing. We're at the city council meeting. Every department head should be represented right here, should be in this room. So if you have a question, you don't have to ask, where's public service? Can anybody go find it? Where's public service? That shouldn't, that shouldn't, uh, that shouldn't take place. And so. When you look at what's going on, and you say, yeah, you don't wanna scream and yell, because that don't get anything done. But what do? When you come and you approach this administration, and you say over and over, we have a problem here, and you get laughed at. So then that's when your moral dignity kick in, you like, I'm a grown man. Why is this other man laughing at me? And so you push him to that point. And the information that these re- that these neighbors are bringing is to help the city. It's not to help him, it's to help the city and keep the city safe, but we shun them out. How's that? How's that helpful to the community? How's it helpful for the city of Apopka? It shouldn't happen. And we keep letting it happen. And I just say shame on us for doing that. We need to look into staffing. And we need to get staffing a hundred percent. A few city council meetings ago too, the mayor had somebody come in and evaluate his job and all the other staff that we have. That result was, everybody else was fine. Only his job needed a salary increase, which went up at that time was supposed to have been seventy-five, now it's a hundred and fifty. But none of the other public service workers get that kind of money. Their job don't look, get looked at and get evaluated. And say, hey, look, we need a raise. So I'm asking each and every one of you, like I always do when I come up here, I'm holding you accountable to do your job. Because the City of Apopka residents. When they go to sleep at night, they wanna know that they're safe. When they drop their kids off at school, they wanna know that it's safe. And you're right, sir, these potholes are ridiculous. Throughout the city, they're ridiculous. We can find money to do everything else. It's just a matter of our priorities, what our priori- priorities are. So please. Think about the citizens. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello again. Um, Nadine James, Suncrest Drive, Apopka. I would like to know what exactly is covered under this increase. That's my biggest concern, but also, especially with the other residents saying that. They're watching thousands of gallons of water being flushed into a retention pond. And hearing that there's approximately six thousand people that have old meters. My meter at my house has been replaced twice. Within, I would say, the last year, if not year and a half. So if my meter is being replaced twice, why are none of the other meters being replaced? But that's my, my biggest question is, what is covered under that twenty-three some odd percent increase? I mean, it may not affect me by, uh, you know, five or ten dollars, but for some other people, that five or ten dollars increase. It could mean a meal. I'm, I'm relatively lucky in that respect, but I don't understand why my meter's been replaced twice. And we're asking for a twenty percent increase with no explanation of what that's gonna cover. Cuz when I saw forty percent, I was like, oh, heck no. We need to snip that in the bud. So now it's reduced, but we still need some kind of explanation. Uh, that any increase should cover something and say, we're doing this. The, the director needs a new car, or, you know, the, the workers need new trucks, because what we have is constantly being maintained. So it's more beneficial cost-wise to buy new equipment. That explanation would be at least somewhat plausible and more, you know, manageable for people to understand why we're getting such an increase.
Anybody else?
Tyler Bench, uh, three-six-oh-three Golden Gem Road. It's come to light that about thirty-one million dollars were transferred to a bank owned by one of the councilor members' friends. Over an eighteen-month period, this sum has failed to accure, accrue, uh, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
What's this have to do with the water? Are you gonna get to the water?
I'm getting there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, it's just a stark illustration of the financial irresponsibility that's become way too common in the city. Um, the lack of transparency and accountability surrounding these funds is unacceptable. And, uh. That shouldn't.
And where, where is this going with the water? I'm sorry.
It's, it's getting there.
Okay, thank you.
Um. You shouldn't punish the hard-working citizens with an a- with a rate increase. That's all.
Thank you.
Lozvin versus the City of Riviera Beach, Florida, states that he doesn't have to talk about. The topic at hand. He can talk about anything he wants. When it comes to, and I've sent that to you multiple times, and it's been published in the newspaper in the City of Apopka also. And on multiple Facebook pages. So the city council has had multiple copies of it also. So the chair should have read it. Um, and that's a U- US Supreme Court ruling in the Roberts. In twenty-eighteen Roberts Court. So I'm stating it again up here, because I know he's listening to me, even though in his office the other day. He says he doesn't listen to the citizens standing up here, because they come in all the time, repeating the same thing over and over again. And so he just doesn't listen to them, and that's why he moved it to the end. The public comments to the end of the meeting, because they say the same thing over and over again. And, uh, what I want to say about. The budget is that we have some items at the beginning of the budget in the administrative field, and I called about it. And there are items that have no descriptions. No, don't interrupt me. This is my four minutes.
You need to talk about the water, just talk about the water.
No, I can talk about anything I want in my four minutes. It's the law. It's the First Amendment. And it's in the Sunshine Manual. It's in the Sunshine Manual for twenty-twenty-four. And I have discussed it with him. And, um, I can have, and the other people here can also have, the courts explain it to you. I have gone to law school. I've had law classes.
Cliff, you wanna answer that?
And no, this is my four minutes. He doesn't get to talk during my four minutes. He doesn't get to talk during my four minutes, and you don't get to talk during my four minutes. And there's no interruption whatsoever during my four minutes.
That's the way the world.
And he's not allowed to talk during my four minutes. And he knows it, and you know it. Now, um, I asked Susan to explain, and I never got a, a question back, and I think it's because somebody's not getting it to her. Is what is, what are the lines that have been whited out with no description in the administrative section of the budget? At the beginning of the budget section for the administration. There's no description. Why don't we have a description at the top? And I sent that in an email to all of you, addressed to the mayor. What are those items at the top of the budget? And we get no time to address you prior to you voting on that. And then why did they not have a description in them, and why are they not under salaries? I think that is the. Why aren't they getting, uh, regular salaries? Is that the whole city's salaries or just under administration? Okay, and then why were there no descriptions there so that the citizens knew that they were salaries? Okay, and then why were there no descriptions there so that the citizens knew that they were salaries? Okay, I think that this is wrong. It's not public, and the citizens can't look at the budget and know what those hundreds of thousands of dollars are for. So that, that's a glaring, glaring mess up.
Um, I, I just have to say that your mic has been cut off this whole time, so whatever's been discussed here, I don't think the public that is tuning in has.
This is a violation of the Sunshine Law again. We have numerous violations of the Sunshine Law that have been recorded in this city. And, um, yeah, I don't, I haven't been, had my four minutes. I've been totally interrupted and disrespected, and the Sunshine Law has been violated here. And I hope that part has been recorded because there have been numerous ones.
Uh, can I ask, before you come up, uh, our attorney was saying something, so I want to give him the floor so that he can.
Right, th- there, there's two public periods. One is for the items that are on the agenda, and it should be limited to comment that's relevant to the items on the agenda. The other is the public comment period for anything that's not on the agenda, such as what was just discussed. And that's based on the decision of the board, uh, at the end of the meeting. So on that section, she can speak about whatever she wants within the rules of the twenty-sixteen, sixteen, I think, resolution. But this is not that period, that's later today.
That is when he was talking and cut off. That period, the, during the discussion periods before the actual public comment, public comment, is when he was cut off, and they said, we're talking about this topic. And you cannot talk about the other topic. And he said, I am talking about the other topic, and he was cut off.
I also provided to the commission, and I've told them what I believe to be the law. And that's the situation, I still believe it's correct, and I said the same thing to you. That's the situation, you have not been denied the opportunity to speak, you'll be given the opportunity to speak again at the end of the meeting, just like everybody else. That's the way it is.
Thank you, Ms. Olstead.
Well, Ms. Olstead? Brian? You know I have a full earned degree as a doctorate.
Thank you.
Yeah. Brian?
Hello, my name is Francine Pollard, address nineteen thirteen Sanderland Point Loop in Apopka. I, touching on the water rate increase and all of the increases. I, I fortunately can pay my bills. Um, sometimes it is tight. And that is with me working as a healthcare provider. I know many people who work minimum wage jobs can't afford those rate increases, so they can barely afford what they're paying right now. Um, for the young lady that mentioned that she skips flushing, she may be one of those six thousand whose water meter is broken. So even if you skip flushing, you're still being charged. Um, and that's unfortunate. Also wanted to touch on the fact that I'm, if, if you're one of those six thousand, you're being charged based on your rates or your usage a year ago. A year ago, I may have had a, a leak in my house. So I could be doing everything that I can to decrease my water usage to try to conserve. Because as Floridians, I think I can speak for many, we naturally try to conserve. You could be doing everything you can to try to conserve, and it's mute because they have broken meters. Now, with this increase, they didn't even mention, when she came, the lady came up to speak, she didn't even mention that part of that increase was to repair these meters. So what's the reason for the increase? So you're gonna continue to have these broken meters and yet increase people's rates? That's not fair. It's not fair all around, but, and also wanted to say this meeting time is, not too many people can make it to these meetings. Uh, most of us are working nine to five, Monday through Friday, in order to pay for all of these rate increases. Even now, I have my phone set because I'm late for picking up my children from school. These times are not, they're not convenient for the average person. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erica Mand, I'm at nineteen oh seven Sanderland Point Loop. Um, I am one of those newcomers, I am not one that traditionally comes to those meetings, but after seeing today, I think that's something that's going to change. Um, like Franny said, sorry, we're neighbors, so, Franny, um, like Franny said, when we received this notice stating forty percent, and yes, okay, it's been decreased to twenty-three point, whatever it may be. There's still no reasoning, there's still no explanation, I understand there's broken meters, but like she said, that wasn't mentioned. It would be one thing if, you know, we're getting improved water quality, or something else that goes with it, twenty percent is still too high. Our water bill with where it is, that would be about a thirty-dollar increase for us per month. It's still too much for us, but there needs to be some sense of explanation and a betterment for this type of increase. We need to know and understand more. And it's just not something that many people can take on, and that has to be considered. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I know that, oh, I'm sorry. There's a, there's a. Ah, you do, you got, aha! And you can also draw that.
We'll make it work. All right, my name's Jeff Chesick from Montego Circle in Apopka here. And, um, I've been in Apopka for about forty years, and I just want to say I love the emotion. And, um, you know, of all, and diversity of all of my fellow citizens of Apopka here. Um, one thing though, everybody's saying they don't want a rate increase for their water. I don't mind a rate increase. If you can tell me why I need a rate increase. Everybody's sitting in here with this ticket, um, out there, it's a letter from Blanche that says, in twenty-twenty-four, the city of Apopka completed a study of water. The study resulted in proposed rates and charges for the next several years. Okay, is there a city attorney here? You're trying to have a public hearing on a study that was done to raise the water rates. But your public is supposed to be able to have access to that study so that they can come in here informed. And maybe they would all be sitting here saying, wow, we really do need this water increase. I tried doing a records request for, I don't know, over two weeks, and I want to thank Susan because she really tried to help and find that study. Nobody could provide that study, I talked to Susan, I went through Lydia, I talked to Blanche. Um, nobody has a study of why you're telling us you want to increase our water rates. So I don't think there's any possible way that you can vote on this, um, without giving another hearing after we are able to have access to the information that's telling you why we need to raise our water rates. Especially when you take into consideration somebody saying that we have about six thousand meters that aren't charging appropriately, well, how do we know how much more money we need to facilitate an effective water system in this city? So that's really all I have to say is, I really wish I could get ahold of that study, it went through the records request process. It's not available to me, um, so please, if you can forward that, maybe this is a good idea that we actually need to raise our rates.
Yeah, and, yes, we get the Rafftelis report? We can't?
What's that?
Yeah, it's, it's called a Rafftelis report, I, I know Blanche, you know, we can show you the both the forty percent and then the, the twenty-three percent, she's got, yeah, that's available. Um, I'm sorry if we didn't get that to you.
We don't have the completed study, that's what it does not.
Right.
We're still working, we're still working on, can I say?
That was the whole intent of my, whatever, was that in twenty-twenty-four, the city of Apopka completed a study of water.
It's still underway.
You don't have a complete study.
That was their proposed, because we're trying to cut it back.
So you shouldn't have put this on the agenda for this month.
Yeah, because we're trying to cut it back. So that's what it is, that was their proposed race, we do have the emails to support that. But we're still trying to, like I told council, we're dampening things, trying to cut things back for the future rates.
And, and we're also, we have, I know, I know that Jacob wanted to weigh in here, um, one of the other things that we're doing, uh, Rafftelis is doing an impact fee study, so that's for the new, the new construction, for them to pay uh, a much higher rate for, um, wastewater, you know, the hookups, water, wastewater reclaim.
The reason why the rate study isn't finished is because, uh, initially it, it asked for more than a forty percent increase. So we've been working with Rafftelis to try to defer capital improvements. And so that's the process to try to figure out what those, those costs would be and what, what years we can reasonably put them out to.
Well, I understand.
That's why it's not finished.
Yeah, I understand we like October first as a date to, you know, start a new approval, but if you're not ready for it, um, we're not ready for it.
Full year, we're, we're already operating into our reserves, that's, that's the main issue.
Yeah, and as far as the records request, I was, back when you were a commissioner, I was a research and planning coordinator over in Orange County. I provided you with all kinds of data, and I've never been moved around from phone to phone to phone trying to find somebody who has this study that's supposedly completed based on a letter that was sent out to the public.
We, we could get that to you, absolutely.
Well, and if we can go back real quick too, I'm, I'm gonna hit your topics, uh, one thing, can we confirm that, was there a mic turned off at one point at all, IT? Was there a mic turned off at any point?
I, I turned, I turned off.
Okay, so you, attorney Shepard, how is this, what we're doing here not a form of censorship of our public?
If you're, I, I don't know what part of it we're talking about. If you're talking about the ability for them to speak, I didn't see that not happen. If you're all talking about whether it's recorded or sent out over the airwaves to wherever it's going, that's a different matter. But I, again, I'm trying to understand what your question is.
That's, it's all of it, I, I need to know, how is that not a form of censorship if we're gonna interrupt the public on what the, what they're talking about, whether it's related or not? And if they do get to a point, we're still interrupting them. First point, second point is turning off a mic so that our residents and, and those that can't be here at one-thirty.
Okay. Uh, I'll start with the last part, that's the easy one, you're not required to broadcast your meetings, whether you do or not, is a decision for you all to make. So that's easy to determine, that's not a Sunshine Law issue. In terms of what is a Sunshine Law issue or Sunshine issue, uh, or censorship issue, you cannot tailor the message of someone delivering it from the podium if there's an opportunity to present that message, which there is later in this meeting, on things not on the agenda. But it's also perfectly fine for when you have agenda items such as budget or issues regarding zoning or the comp plan amendments or so forth, to have the speakers who want to speak to those items be able to speak to those items during that specific time. So in either case, so long as you're given an opportunity to speak to the items on the agenda, and in this case, the items that are not on the agenda, which happens later tonight, or today, uh, you're, you're not being censored. It'd be a different thing if, for example, on the topic that's in front of you, I got up to speak about it and said, I don't like it, and I think it's a terrible idea, and you said you can't deliver that message here, now you have a different issue.
But the problem is, can, can the argument be made that I'm trying to prove the point that infrastructure is not catching up? That our, all of these other items that we're not doing, we're having overdevelopment, and at the very end, I'm saying we shouldn't be raising water rates, but I'm being interrupted while I'm doing that.
Yeah, well.
It's a form of intimidation, it's a form of, uh, trying to silence.
First of all, I, I don't want to be given the wrong impression here. I, I don't make up the law, I just tell you what it is. And so the answer to your question is, the interruptions, depending on how much they are, I think it's, for example, a germane question to say, when somebody appears to be completely off topic, to say, is this gonna relate back to whatever the topic is in front of me? I think that's an appropriate question, to talk over someone, different story, but if the person who is being asked to yield the floor so that a question could be answered that comes from any one of you, that person should yield the floor or else I can't answer your question. And so that's tricky, but I don't get to run the meetings and stop people from talking or make people talk, or anything like that. So that's the answer. So yes, if I was speaking to the topic, even if I was out in left field but was coming back to it, and I saw that happen already today, at least once, maybe more than once. Where the question was asked, are we gonna get to the water part? And eventually, we got there.
Um, but it should have only been asked once, keeping interrupting, again, it's a form of, of intimidation, that's saying that, i- it's a form of censorship. I feel like that could be argued, that, can, can you agree that that can be argued?
I, I can agree that a lawyer would make the argument, how about that?
I, cause lawyers make a lot of arguments. That's fine. And then in reference to, going back to what we're discussing now, I guess, why was it so difficult to get the Rafftelis report out? Even though it's not complete?
Well, are we, we want a closed public hearing, and anybody else, if not, we can do that. I know we've got some, we also have some staff members, we've got, uh, from wastewater and from, from water. What's that? Okay.
So what, where's the report? How, why is this so difficult to obtain? And, and, and multiple people have, have referenced the same thing, I take way too many notes on, but everyone's saying, where's the proof?
Briefings and all, everything else, that the study is still underway, and that's, this is a five-year rate recommendation. And they recommended the forty percent, forty percent, and fifteen percent. We're trying to minimize that impact going forward, so they are still working on those future years.
Well, why don't, why can't we provide that report that did show the forty, forty?
It's an email, if you want, we can provide an email, but the actual full study.
But that's what was.
Yeah, we can provide the email, but he said study, so that's.
Walk me through the process now of, and do we have anybody from, um, Pull It Works? Oh, yes, we've got two. Okay, so there's a lot of questions that, that came up that I think are, are worth obviously answering. Uh, what's the process, if we want to, uh, table this for now?
Sure, I think, I think we should.
To, I didn't finish my question. Uh, what's the process of tabling this so that everybody can get a comfort level on where we're at? Get the justification, understanding the study out that we can't find? And what's the timeline that we need to be hitting? Do we have to get this done by October first?
Yep, it, we need, yes.
We need to, we have to.
I would say we need to and have to if we want a tentative budget.
So, but we don't, we could push this out another month, there's no fines that are gonna happen from this, n- nothing is gonna.
I mean, you don't have to do the increase effective October first, then we'll have to see what the impact that is on the budget, we'll have to come back and, and change it, you know, with the cuts, we've already cut two-point-two million from this budget in order to get down to the twenty-three-point-seven-five.
I understand.
So it does have an impact and.
But I think giving a little more time to have our residents be confident in what we're doing is very important.
And I'm planning to share some details at the workshop this evening, that's in the PowerPoint presentation.
But we're voting on it now, I guess, is the problem.
I know, it, it, well, if you want additional details now, people are asking, what is it covering? It's covering salaries and wages, operating expenses, and the capital expenses, basically. And including the maintenance of the meters and everything like that, these are, this is the operating fund. Yeah, this is not the impact fee fund.
Right, four oh one.
The impact fee fund, that's a separate fund, those funds are restricted for expansion purposes. And to minimize that impact on the citizens, we had to compromise on both ends, that's why it's at the twenty-three-point-seven-five percent. We cut two-point-two million out of this budget to get down to that twenty-three-point-seven-five percent.
Which I understand, I think the residents understand that too, I, I don't think that's lost on anybody, but they want to know where and why and how.
What we cut.
Nobody's happy with increased prices, everybody's feeling that, that tightness right now, and they're in their pockets, that, that is definitely not lost, but I think that's important, and, and again, I think it's, you guys have the data, and I think it's just we need to share. It's transparency was referenced over and over and over here, so I think that's huge.
Well, this fund, as I explained to you in the briefings, over the past two years, has utilized funds out of reserves for projects such as Plymouth Regional, um, System. Think it's, um, something for Golden Gem, we had that emergency, we had the Vic Road emergency, and some other major projects that had to happen in order to maintain the infrastructure. So as a result of that, you had to pull funds from reserves to balance the budget for the last two years. Now, as I explained in the budget workshops, you're at a deficit.
Right.
So you, you're at a deficit.
Multi-million dollar deficit, which I totally understand, and again, that, the whole point, which I'm so glad there's so many residents here, because they're the heartbeat of our community, and it's important, it's key.
You add a deficit, so you got to increase the rate.
Right, but, and I, but I think people like to know too, going back those two or three years, we did see small increases, but why wasn't that enough? Why are we having issues? People just want to hear that more and more, although you may have already discussed it, people are here now, and they, they, they want to know that, so I think.
Over the years, it was like a three percent, three percent, three percent, last year we did three and six percent, and that's not adequate. Those rates were not increased with the cost in the, you know, the wear and tear on the system and what it cost to maintain the system.
Increase in staffing, increase, I, yeah, I understand, yeah.
Exactly, but this, that's what it costs, cost is going up, you have to maintain the system. You have to make certain improvements within it, but if it's a repair and a maintenance and maintain, that's the operating fund. Impact fees is for new and expansion, those funds are restricted for that purpose, they don't support this fund. So those funds cannot, so that's the purpose of the increase.
I understand, okay, well, I think putting that in, into a document some sort, making sure that, that Rafftelis report, although unfinished or, it's more so it's finished, we're just editing it.
We're still, if the police impact, police impact fee, fire impact fee, recreation impact fee, and the water wastewater, um, study. We have preliminary information, we met with them, we discussed the rates increase, we know we need to cut back or push back some of the projects because it's causing such a significant increase. So, and that's what we're working on with the new CIP. I will be bringing the CIP to the final. So, and that's what we're working on with the new CIP. I will be bringing the CIP to the final budget hearing on the eighteenth. Of this month. Yes, and at that point, once we get that revamped, that's when we go back to Raftellus.
CIP is the Capital Improvement Plan.
Capital Improvement Plan, go back to Raftellus to get them to see what impact that would have on the future rates. Starting with for water and wastewater at the twenty three point seven five, which is what they originally recommended was the forty forty. But what would be twenty six rate? What would be twenty seven, twenty eight and twenty nine?
I think all of this information is gonna be so useful to build confidence in our residents to so that they understand. Nobody's happy about increased rates, myself included. Uh, but I think having that data that we can say, this is why, this is where we.
Basically, it's the maintained system. This is the operating fund. It's basically the maintained system. If you're pulling out of reserves for the past two years, you have no more.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sure, come on down.
So what you were saying is this forty percent that everybody here is complaining about would have been more than fifty percent. And you're trying to cut it down. And when you're trying to tie in, um, what do you call it, the impact fees? Which was another thing I requested through the records request and wasn't able to get those either, uh, that information either is. Your impact fees don't have to just cover brand new property that's impacting it. It has, it can cover anything that goes into that brand new property. Water systems work by making big pipes go into smaller pipes to keep the pressure up and get all the way down to where they need to go. So improving our water system, even in the existing area, so that we can feed the new subdivisions that we just approved up there. That also can be part of our impact fee structure.
So let me just give you an example. We just, we completed the wastewater plant at on on Cleveland. It's, you know, sixty million dollar improvement. Uh, that was, um, I guess that's three years old? What, how many, how are you, three years old? So the the funding for that, because we were replacing an old system that was a smaller system with a with a new larger system. Part of the money, part of the payment is coming out of four oh one, which is operating. And some of it's coming out of the four oh three, which is our impact fee. So it's, there are a lot of projects that are both. We're we're gonna be doing a, we have to do based on DEP and St. John's, we've got to go to the lower aquifer, which you've you've heard a little bit about. So lower aquifer is now we gotta drill a new well. So while we're drilling a new well, instead of just replacing the one we got. Let's make it bigger so we can, we can pull more water out of the ground. So we'll be, we'll be doing one here right down on uh Grosenbacher. So we've got to replace that. It'll be another one where we'll have some four oh one money, operating money, along with the four oh three impact fee credits. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you. What's what's hadn't been brought forward is that we spent twenty two million dollars before I got here on projects that are a complete absolute waste. And we're, you, taxpayers are paying, we bought a for, we bought a fertilizer plant we've never used. We 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 add a uh eleven million dollar improvement to a plant we'll never use. And we've spent seven million dollars on a, on a project out at Lush Road that we'll never use. So we spent twenty two million that came out, it's coming out of taxpayers', you know, hides and. Listen, if it were me, I'd take credit for it. I did. I wasn't here when this happened, but I'm have you, us, everybody's having to pay for these, these mistakes that were made. Prior. Do we have a lot of, you know, uh, needs going forward? Absolutely. We've got two big lift stations, probably. Between seventeen seventy seven or probably five million dollars to replace those. The the one on uh by Fran Carlton is is fifty, sixty years old. We've got pipes we've got to replace that are, you know, the. The asbestos, which we're doing one, one segment of that, probably another five million. The set uh uh lift station seventy seven is probably, because we gotta buy some land. Uh, another one's probably five to ten million all in and some of that will be four oh one. A lot of will be four oh one, a lot of, some of it will be four oh three. So a lot of the projects we've got going forward will be a mix of four oh one. Uh, operating and then the four oh three capital. And so it's, you know. It, so it makes a look, the, you know, the, 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 the report is a little, you know, you, there's some balancing between what you, what you're replacing. And what you're adding to the system. That makes sense.
So with the price of housing the way it is and the impact fees that are collected. My recommendation would be just take a little more from the impact side. So that all these people's water isn't affected by a number that's astronomical. I mean, we we don't wanna be like the other, the other towns, you know, don't, you like the wastewater study that was presented. That one I was able to get, the one that was done in twenty twenty two. Well, we were, you know, comparing ourselves to several like cities. And then all of a sudden they threw, um, what was it up there? The one over on on the coast, Palm Bay, in there, so that the bar graph was way up here, so that our average looked like it was, you know, kinda high. Well, Palm Bay doesn't count. They have all different regulations being right there that close to the ocean than we have internally here. So um, our average should have been down here, which would have been almost the same as what they came up with and would have been more realistic and wouldn't look silly. To the public that was actually looking at these reports. But yeah, I understand it's it's very expensive to run a city. There's a lot of parts and pieces. And um, it just, if if there's something you can do to make this, you know, forty percent not be forty percent, I can pay it. I don't have any problem with that. I mean, that number is still low compared you look at some places like Oakland and uh things like that who are astronomical. Um, but we don't need to be one of them. We're we're better than that. So that's all I have to say about this topic.
Appreciate that. Okay. Got one more?
Virginia Street. Two one one nine Palm Vista Drive. I have been, I guess, hanging around for the last month and have watched. So last, for the newcomers, last budget meeting. Uh, you would have seen the line items about why the increase was needed and what was removed. To make it from forty to twenty something, right? So I uh encourage you to look at that information. Because it probably make it a little bit clearer for you. Um, I do agree that we do need to do something about the system uh that we have, the infrastructure that we have now. I mean, we sat here and we looked at almost five hundred, five hundred, almost six hundred new homes that we're gonna add. To our infrastructure. And right now, what I've seen from the infrastructure and the things that are happening with the water system. I don't know if, if we continue to keep bringing in new homes that are gonna require this service. I don't know if we are ready to handle that, you know? We gotta have a strong infrastructure to support where we're going. It looks like we're gonna continue to expand our bounds and add new homes. And new property and new people and, you know, um, uh, the young man that said something about the. Traffic, you know, that's something to consider also, but the one thing that we need to really think about is the water system. Are we, is our water gonna be, you know, I don't want another Flint situation here. You know, nobody wants that. I want the water to be drinkable. Right now, I don't know anybody that drinks a pop of water. Nobody. There's bottled water being, you know, I have, I have the Cooligan man at my house delivering water for me to drink. You know, I, you know, we want, our citizens need to feel like that they can drink the water, that their health is not gonna be at risk. For just drinking water, taking a shower, you know, so whatever we can do. I know there were things in the line item that I felt very encouraged about was um ensuring that we have the right. Um, people working and the right resources uh there to handle our water system. And also to make sure that the asbestos removal, that word scares me. Asbestos scares me. So whatever improvements we need to do to ensure that we have a clean system, drinkable. That um people are not fearful of uh drinking or using the water in our area needs to be addressed. I think that this, this needs to be tabled until, oh, also, I wanted to say that from those things that I've learned so far. I think that before we put up here and say we wanna do this increase, we need to at least have a slide that said this increase is for A, B, C and D. That would go over better and people will be able to receive it, you know, because I know what they are, because I've been close for a minute. But people that are just walking in here today, they they don't know, you know, and it's not their fault. But if we could help the public bring them up to speed and say, hey, we need this, we need that, we need that, I think people would be able to receive it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Looks like we just wanna wanna table this thing. Um, Blanche, I do wanna, we we need, we'll get together here.
We gotta figure out what the, we're gonna do with the tentative budget, because I do have to advertise a tentative budget along with the mileage rate.
So we have. That's right.
Yeah, I I I have to.
But we could, I mean, we could go back, we could readdress it.
Well, I mean, the details are in the staff report.
Right. I know, but I mean, I think we, I I want the the public to get one more bite at the apple.
Well, then we would have to reschedule what we're doing tonight.
Water wastewater.
Yeah, it's it's a part of the tentative budget.
Jacob, you got any?
We do have an available Wednesday. Next, we do have an available Wednesday next week.
So we have to come back with everything next week, have a special council meeting and then have the another. Um, meeting with the setting the mileage rate and the tentative budget.
What's the pleasure of the board?
If we're gonna do that, it it's something I already stated, I feel, but it's, you know, our residents are the heart of beat of the city and their public comments really matter. And the fact that somebody already referenced that this is a terrible time for us to be meeting for this. If we're gonna do this special meeting, it needs to be at night. So that everybody can be here and 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 we need to have all the information together then to really make an educated decision.
It'll be probably about five fifteen.
I think we need to do later than that. It needs to be like six thirty.
Want to do six? It has to be after five, so, you know, that's why the meeting tonight is after five. So six o'clock is fine with me. If you wanna do six o'clock, but we'll have to address this issue. Well, if you wanna, if you wanna table, we'll have to bring it back on that date.
Right.
Uh, at six o'clock and then do the tentative mileage rate.
Right.
And the tentative budget.
Where are we at with the, the um notices and we just don't wanna get hung up with that?
Now, I know, it it can't be, that's the thing, it cannot be advertised to, no earlier than two days, no later than five days before that final hearing.
We know that.
So, oh yeah, know it very well. So the goal was to do it that Sunday after next week anyway.
Commissioner Smith, are you gonna be okay with, I'm sorry, I know you're gonna be out of town.
He's out of town.
Who?
Commissioner Smith, and I need a unanimous vote on the mileage rate.
Well, that would still be the four, would still be unanimous.
No, I see, and he's gonna be here?
Well, I I was flying back in on Tuesday to be here for the meeting on Tuesday, three o'clock. And I was flying back out Tuesday night.
Yeah.
What time is your flight? Going back out?
Tuesday night, well, so we can meet Tuesday?
I don't know why we can't.
You can, if you wanna do Tuesday night, we can do Monday night.
E- 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 either one, either Monday or Tuesday would really be, but if I mean, if I, if I have to, I I just change my flight again.
Would we be able to advertise in time for the mon, if we do a Monday meeting? So.
How, how does next Tuesday look for everybody?
Well, Tuesday we have the comp plan, we've got that one here. Yeah.
Could we, could we do it after the planning, the joint?
I'm, I'm sorry, you.
Can we, I'm sorry.
Just speak a little louder.
Can we do it after the joint planning commission?
What time is that?
Council.
Yeah, we wanna do it after five. We wanna do it at six.
The joint planning commission.
Planning commission does have their meetings at five thirty.
They meet at five thirty?
Yeah.
The planning commission meets at five thirty.
Oh.
On that Tuesday.
So we might need to make it like six fifteen, Mr. Gillis.
And and let me, what are your exactly, what additional, I mean, I can do a PowerPoint, show what we cut, show the same thing I have in the staff report. And send him the email pertaining to what was recommended by Raftellus. What additional information are you requesting that has not been shared with you?
I, Blanche, I can, I can work with you on that. I think I have a good idea of what, what we need.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't think it's new information. I think it's just restating it in a cohesive manner, it all in one spot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I guess.
Okay, so what are we doing?
Well, we need to, I guess, make a motion to table this until next Tuesday at six o'clock. Is that what?
Next Tuesday at six. If that means.
Say six thirty.
I'm sorry.
Or six.
We have a planning meeting that night.
Yeah, it's five thirty. I don't know what day.
How long?
How long is?
P and Z meeting is at five thirty.
We have six items that are advertised for that evening, so we probably need about an hour.
Okay, so you wanna make it six thirty then next Tuesday?
Okay.
Okay. So we'll make that.
Yeah. Six, so six thirty.
So are we cancel?
We advertised the meeting.
Are we canceling the budget meeting?
Okay, 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 okay. Sorry, sorry.
So, um, I I just, next Tuesday, the tenth, the P, the Planning and Zoning Board meets. At five thirty. And I also have the tenth for the comp plan, the comprehension plan, uh, together with the. Staff and the council. So where, where are we gonna fit all this in?
So the workshop for the comprehensive plan, that's the joint workshop with the city council and the planning commission, that's at three o'clock.
Oh, okay, so that's at three.
Planning commission meeting starts at five thirty. We probably need about an hour to get through that.
We wanna make the city council meeting at six thirty.
Okay.
Okay, so we all good?
So we, we're, we're here, okay, so we're here from three o'clock on.
Correct.
Okay.
So we'll need to table.
And that is enough time to notice properly?
No. That, that, you can notice the meeting, but going, that is going out to the citizens, that is a whole different process. That's entirely different process.
What's the requirement?
To send a letter to each one of them, you're talking maybe thirty thousand dollars that we have to work with our um outsourced agency, NCO, to send those letters out. That is a long time process and they probably don't, wouldn't even do a special run without advanced notice.
So how could we do it Tuesday then?
No, 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 we can advertise the meeting. The notices have already gone out of a rate increase. Right now it's saying the forty percent. We have met the requirements of ordinance with that notice.
Well, I I it's, we're rushing this then.
No, the notice went out on the first.
Forty percent, which we're not doing. And now we're tabling it, so it's a date that we're not doing. So the, we don't have a report either. So let's just get it right. Let's do it right. So let's push this out. It's not gonna happen in October. And we'll figure out the rest of it. We're rushing it otherwise and things are gonna get pushed under the rug. I mean, we're already pulling money from under the mattress to make this budget balance, so.
So you want?
Yeah, the, the, the issue is, is we do have to present a balanced budget and we have some assumptions here and those assumptions are these rate increases. So we have to, we have to know what that assumption is in order to have that balanced budget.
So we can assume this isn't starting till November. And figure out something from there, balance it how we need to from there. One month is not gonna make or break this. We're already in a deficit. So let's just get this right moving forward.
You, you can't balance it in November. You gotta balance it from October first. It's gotta be balanced.
It's barely balanced now, so.
I know.
Say that again?
No, no, we're not.
We, we need, yeah, I mean, the sentiment here for the public that are watching, uh, is that this is feeling rushed, that we're doing it wrong. And we've seen this game before to where we have rushed it and got it wrong and had to go back and make amendments and and things like that, so it's, let's do it right. This is, we're, we're overcomplicating this now. Let's do it right.
Well, the notices went out at August first. About the forty percent increase that was discussed at the workshop with the cook, Avery, the mayor and commissioners and that we all agreed. About the forty percent increase that was discussed at the workshop with the cook, Avery, the mayor and commissioners, and that we all agreed to send them out at the forty percent at a workshop.
That was when you guys told us that that was the only option, and then at workshop, it was twenty percent then.
No, we we told you that's what we needed to cover that budget and to cover that deficit. That's what we shared with you, that's what we needed to cover the deficit, we later went back at the mayor's request and we made some additional cuts and we had a workshop to explain those cuts. You made decisions on items that you wanted cut, things that you wanted to keep, and you asked that, see what that percentage increase would be if we keep those items in the budget. And that's how we came from the twenty percent to the twenty-three point seven five percent.
The budget was presented with a forty percent increase, we got to the workshop with things already taken out without any of our input. We had to put things back in and advocate for that, so that was, again, it wasn't changed on my account, on any commissioner's account. That was changed at twenty percent without us knowing. We added stuff in that we felt was pertinent and remained to continue our city running properly. All that to say, yes, we sent out the proper reports, yes, we're legally where we need to be, the residents don't feel comfortable. So I understand what you're saying, I hear it, I I understand and I hear it, so it's time to, if we need to do more budget workshops this, tomorrow, next mon- next week, whatever, if we take Tuesday, Wednesday to do workshops again to figure out how we balance this for one month of not having that additional revenue income, then let's do it.
So are we gonna make a vote motion?
I mean, we saw this coming, it it's been the talk of, it's been the talk since the since the residents started receiving the notice and um they have reached out to most of us as commissioners, um really asking what is the forty percent and why the forty percent?
And we went over that in detail in the workshops. They were advertised.
So, but before we can make a motion or make a decision, we need to know legally, I thought that this budget had to be submitted about on the September eighteenth date, is that correct?
What would happen after this me- we, after this meeting, let's say we, which is the normal step and has been taken in the past. You would set the rates, like the sanitation rate, the stormwater rate, all of those are factored in the budget and they always occur at the one thirty meeting as well as the wastewater rates, that's factored in the budget. The next meeting that we were planning to have this evening at five fifteen then allows us to set the tentative mileage rate and the tentative budget and then set the final budget hearing date. And then I have to advertise that, that tentative mileage rate and that tentative budget.
And the drop dead date for that is?
We could, if we push this out, if we do this next week, then we could still have the final budget hearing on the eighteenth. If we do it later, we could push that out another week, but we're pushing it very close at that point. There's so many days in between each step that is required to occur, the next thing is required to occur.
So if we don't do the final budget and mileage rate setting on the eighteenth, then that means we have to have another city council meeting before October first.
Right, so September twenty-fifth would be our option.
For the final is what you're talking about.
The final.
But we still need to set a preliminary prior to the final.
Yeah, we still need to have the tentative prior to the final. Just to be clear, the only thing that would be advertised is the meeting, not notices going to the customers.
We need to, we need to keep it here, so.
But the question was, the first budget doesn't have to be the final, that there can be edits in between, that was the question, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it can be edits. We have time to make edits, even if we set the tentative now, we could, yes, sir.
We could pass the budget like it is, rates the way they are, and then between now and the eighteenth, have all the information to bring forward. And if we want the rate to be eighteen percent, or then we'd have to figure out other cuts to make that.
Exactly.
Within the four oh one operating, not within the, and that's the, the, what people need to realize, there's, there's the the general admin budget which is about a hundred million dollars, and then there's the, the you, the enterprise fund budget, which is what?
Depends, let's say, I'm talking off the top of my head, seventy, seventy million.
Yeah, but but it just in the four oh one, it's about a thirty.
Thirty million.
Thirty million dollar.
Thirty million.
Yeah, so.
Thirty, thirty-two million. It's in the report.
My suggestion, I mean, and y'all, you know, obviously you weigh in, I, my suggestion is we, we, we go in to prove this as it is. And then we get, and then we can come back on the eighteenth, if you wanna adjust it. Then we can adjust it, but.
If you want.
Adjust it with with.
Can now, please? If you approve it now, we sent out the tentative budget, we can come back and you can put that with disclaimers, come back and see if we can later reduce that.
We we're, 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 we've already, we've closed down public comment, now we're just within the the staff and the, and the, yeah, 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 yeah. Right, so.
So residents are saying to, to make sure the people on, on the camera understand or that are watching online is that they feel like we're not having the correct information to vote on this, that we're just pushing this through and that neither the residents nor ourselves have the full picture of what we're voting on, but it's impacting financially our residents.
And actually, once again, I can say everything was discussed at the workshops, it's in the staff report, but if, you know. The only item that I hear he's asking for, I can give him a copy of an email from Raff Tillis. And Jacob may have additional information, and I do have details in my presentation at five fifteen. Do I need to pull that up now?
Well, we can't, can't really.
Yeah.
Bring it forward until five fifteen.
Yeah, but I mean, I do have those.
You can do it twice, I guess.
I guess I'll do it twice.
Yeah.
Rob, can you pull up the, and maybe it's adequate, this is talking about what we discussed in the different?
I mean, we could do this twice, I, it's not gonna change my residents' minds, I don't think, they want time, we don't wanna be rushed, so feel free to do it. We're, we're, order of operation is wrong on this one, for me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you have any questions of George while he's here?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, did he leave?
Okay.
George is, uh, is, is, can you come up, can George come up before you start this?
Sure.
Cuz one of the questions was, um, that I got. If one-third of the meters are not functioning and we're sending out bills just estimating, can you tell me how are we keeping up with the six thousand? How are we going forth with six thousand meters? How are we changing them, who's out there, um, have you identified all these residents already?
Uh, they're identified through their uh, through a bill, it actually shows that it's, excuse me, it's an estimated bill.
It's identified as it's, as an estimated bill. But how are we now going the city? Once we identify a homeowner, resident, that that's an estimated bill, how are we going back to make sure that a new meter or their meter needs to be changed, how are we doing that?
We identify that through work orders through the admins billing system, the work orders created, we go out there and update the meters, so. The issue is, um, we, the supply changed a lot since twenty twenty.
I'm sorry, so.
The supply of uh meters and flex nets, everything changed since twenty twenty, so we had a decrease in supply. And this year was the first year that we began to receive uh meters, uh eye pearls, uh flex nets, so the meter itself collects the reading, the flex net connects to our base stations that uh we're able to uh get those readings back at a utility billing. So now that we got those, now we can begin to have a formal replacement program and say that, okay, we're gonna start with the estimated reads and then begin to uh complete uh um upgrades to the older meters that are uh have met their life cycle as well. So we're, we're not only doing repairs, we're doing uh replacements, we're also doing the new installations. So every new uh development that comes in here, we're also providing the meters and uh as of uh the beginning of this month, we had did uh twelve hundred new installations. So that's uh out of those, it's eleven hundred of potable end readings, the other ones were single installations. So we have a massive workload and we're trying to do it with a limited uh manpower to do all of that. With the lack of um materials, we were not able to get a contractor on board cuz there was nothing for them to install. Now that we have material, next fiscal year, we can bring a contractor on board and they can assist us with installing or upgrading these meters, so. Again, it's, we are tied to whatever the funds allow. Uh, once the funds deplete, then at that point, we have to still have uh enough meters in stock to complete the new installations and then try to manage the repairs as needed.
So, and it sounds like it's a staffing issue then, that if we hire more staff, we'll be able to knock this out much quicker.
I mean, it's better if you contract it out, cuz once you finish the installations mm, then they're up to date, and now you just gotta work on the repairs and going forward.
And we currently don't have this in the budget for a contractor.
That we have an approved contract uh in place to bring in the contract, uh contractor on board as October first. There is funding in there, again, it's, as, once the funding, the funding. Can y'all still hear? So when the funding uh gets depleted, then that's where we are, right now, we have exhausted all our funding as, as of today.
So when we have the contract, how many meters are assessed and replaced with the contract that we got?
As many as we want them to.
Yeah, we have funds to replace the meters, to purchase the meters to be replaced. That's what we do have funds in the budget for, now, the funds that we were considering in 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 with this outsourcing option, that's a, woo, that which, the power's gone, but that was a part that was cut, out of the, get down about the four hundred and twenty thousand that I had in the budget, where we were gonna replace some of the base stations for some of the old towers and um add some new base sta- base stations. That's the part that got cut out of this, when we took it from the forty percent to the twenty-three point seven five. I I had funds in there so that we can consider that option. And whether we needed to have more staff internally, or whether we needed to outsource it or whether we needed to buy more um base stations and some of the other towers. So, ju- just to be full transparent, that that the mayor and I had discussed it and we had it in there.
And so what was that, a hundred and twenty thousand?
It was four hundred and twenty thousand.
Four hundred and twenty.
For all of them?
Yes, that was like the entire, we had a discussion with Corin Maine as the vendor and census and of what approach to take, and I'm not exactly sure what all they were going to do. Either we would add more base stations or we've worked with them to do a different type of process where it's outsourced to them. And I don't know if they were gonna do the maintenance or what they were proposing. Okay, so.
We still have a contract with them for contracted.
Yeah, but that was the outsourcing portion, that was factored there. So, but we, when, when we went through the process and what I explained to you guys of trying to cut that two point two million dollars out to get the rates down to the twenty-three point seven five, that amount was cut out. The four hundred and twenty, so we only left a hundred and eighty thousand just for base stations. And that's what reads the meters. To replace the two old that about been out there twenty years, as I understand it, and to add a new one. And we also add a new one this fiscal year. Okay.
I have one additional question, um, Mr. George, thank you for being here. The, and and I don't know, we don't have meters for water coming out, so we don't have meters for sewer coming out, that's an estimate of the amount of water we use, correct?
We have a small percentage of sewer meters, but yeah, for them, all the, for mo- or majority of the residential is a um uh percentage.
So it's a calculation based on how much water you use?
Yes.
So, it's not, it's not a perfect, okay, you've, the, the residents use this as an example of, of the amount of flushes I did this month was X, it's irrelevant.
It goes through their, whatever you, uh water is getting used, uh then they calculate the percentage and that's how they're, they calculate their uh sewer bill. But there is a cap on the residential.
On the sewer side?
Yeah, on the sewer side, so they won't be overcharged or over a certain amount.
Okay, understood, thank you.
You good with George? Any other questions for George or Blanche or?
So when we cut the four hundred and twenty thousand, how does that affect the meat?
I'm gonna show you in a minute.
Okay.
You never know what question may come up. So, fund four oh one, water wastewater reclaim utility operating fund. So these are the cuts that we discussed, okay? We were looking at, in order to get the rates down to the twenty percent, about three point two million. And we were gonna freeze the director pub, uh assistant director of public service position, we decided not to do that, so we kept that in. And the customer service specialist, we kept that in, we agreed to proceed with transferring Richards um to community development, and of course, we made some pension adjustments that showed some savings as well. Commissioner Valesquez, you asked that the water plant infrastructure assessment remain, that was a hundred and fifty thousand. And Commissioner Nestor, you asked that the asbestos water main replacement project remain, that's five hundred thousand. Okay, some of these other expenses, as you see listed, were cut out of the budget. Forty-seven thousand for pickup truck generator, um, as listed on here. Land purchased for uh lift station seventy-seven that went to the four oh three funds, that's one of those things that can be purchased out of the four oh three fund. Uh, replacement meter communication, a hundred and eighty-three thousand, that is cut. Sludge hauling, hauling trailer that was cut, a hundred and twenty, Ford Maverick, thirty-five thousand. And here's the base stations, meter uh reading towers, four hundred and twenty thousand that I just mentioned. The total budget that I had was six hundred K, we cut it back to just a hundred and eighty thousand to replace the two old um base stations, base stations and add one more new. Eighty-five thousand for Ford three fifty, four hundred thousand for a vac con truck, and ninety-five thousand for the F three fifty utility bed truck, so a lot of vehicles and items were basically cut out of the big, uh budget and some equipment. And those are basically some of your capital things and some of your operating expenses as well. Okay?
Any, any questions on that, the uh the cuts?
Any questions?
Sure, come on. You, you come down to the mic, please, sir. No, you got it, it won't, it won't pick up unless you're at the mic.
I'm just wondering, what, what are we covering the tentative budget numbers for regarding water and wastewater and things?
The next slide.
Okay, I mean, what, why are we covering the numbers, though? For you to get clarification on if we're gonna vote on that other issue on the increases?
You talking the highlights?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, yeah, no, cuz my, my concern is that, you know, I tried looking up there and those numbers don't concern me, it's the study that made you get to those numbers, that you, you're, you're trying to vote on that issue It's the study that made you get to those numbers that you, you're, you're trying to vote on that issue. Without even having the study yourself as voting members. So, these numbers, anybody can just put a number in there, but why did you come to that? Why do you think we need to improve that? Because if there was a study done that shows we're deficient here, deficient there, you know, we're short here. Um, that's why we need to increase this. So, that, that's all I'm asking is, you know, we're showing a budget overview, but that really isn't relevant to the. To the reasons why you're asking me for that, anybody could come up, you know, and, and say, I need forty percent more. Well, I'm not gonna vote for that unless you give me a good reason.
Overview, the next slide is her budget overview. It'll show you based on, but it's like, for instance, the, uh, one of the things that we, we um, we're gonna do is. The first part of the asbestos pipe replacement. Uh, we had a, we had a federal grant that we were gonna, that was gonna pay for half of it and uh, it got pulled. Federal government took it away from us and so we, we didn't have um, so, but we still decided. We, cause we've already done all of the preliminary design work, we're gonna go ahead and do that one. And how, how much was that, Blanche, that was like? Two point five million.
Two point five million, no.
So, yeah.
And again, the information came from the consultants, we had meetings with the consultant. We have documentation for that, it's just has not been formalized in the final study because it's still on the way. These were the various recommendations, these are the rates that we looked at, ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty, twenty-three point seven five and the forty percent. That's the details of the revenue. The details of the expenses, salary wages and friends, eight point five, other operating expenses, including some of the things that we just talked about. And um, capital and the transfer. So, those are the details there, that's what the budget consists of for the twenty-three point seven five percent at thirty-two point eight million dollars.
Well, I think the question too though, and I appreciate you showing this, is that where are these numbers coming, where are you pulling these numbers from?
I'm not pulling, I'm getting these from the, the consultant, that all of those revenue projections?
I agree, I, I think we're on the same page, I think that's the question from the residents, they wanna see the equal sign from report, equal sign to here.
Well, only thing that the, the consultant is gonna provide is this top level here, where it says fees. No, I'm talking about as far as the recommended.
I understand, but there's data that they show too of how they got to that number as well.
Oh, yeah, there's information that shows how they came to that number, yeah, but I don't, I can see, I can show you the emails, that's all I got. Just emails, I said, give me a projection, revenue projection based on this, the operating expenses here, everything else below here came from the budget workshops.
Didn't this gentleman, the, the Raftellis, didn't they come in and do something like a two hour presentation a few years back, a year and a half back, a year back? It was a substantial presentation, it was a long presentation, a very detailed presentation.
And they will be coming to do that again once it's finalized, but I wasn't here for that, but I heard that.
That, I think again, is what residents are asking for, there's new residents asking for that, so that, it's that same information, that's all coming from somewhere, I think that's what residents are asking. I think we're all on the same page here, it's just they wanna see the equal signs, that's all they want.
Come on up, you gotta, yeah, gotta come to the mic. Alvin McKimmy, three six oh three Golden Gem Road, the residents are asking questions about how money's been spent. Well, what I would like to know is we have six thousand meters just now that require to be replaced. I would guess that the minimum cost to replace a meter, including the purchase and the labor and the infrastructure and the management to do it. Must cost at least three hundred dollars per meter. I've heard several residents saying that they have meters replaced and then replaced again within a space of two years. What's the life expectancy of a meter? Are there warranties on those meters? Are the city paying twice for a substandard project, uh, for, for a substandard item? Are they warranted? You know, if you consider six thousand meters at three hundred dollars a meter, that's one point eight million dollars just to replace meters. It doesn't take into account how much money we're losing or likely to lose with the revenue for those meters or how much people are being overcharged. The other thing is, when we start to replace meters, it's not just a case of replacing the meters, we have base stations, we have towers to build. What's the actual cost that we, do we know the actual cost just now of what it's costing to replace these meters and to keep them updated? That's something I would like to know.
I just wanted to seek some clarification.
Name and address again.
Oh, sorry, yeah, Erica Mann, nineteen oh seven, Standard and Point Loop. Um, I wanted to inquire more details around the service and late charges line item. It stays consistent throughout each column until you get to that forty percent proposed and somehow it's drastically reduced. And I don't understand where that number or figure came from, if it's so much of an increase, how are you gonna have less people late? You know, more people late, so what consultant came up with that and how does that make sense?
The gentleman, the gentleman in the wheelchair. Leroy Bell, okay, you, you, you know me, and you'll get to know me better as public company. The gentleman in the wheelchair was asking a question, how did we get to this number? If the, if the people on the diocese remember the way we got to this number. It was a gentleman that came in and he was at the request of the chair. About raising different rates that we was behind so many different other cities. If you remember that gentleman, that Commissioner Becker stopped him. And said, hey man, uh, why are we going through all these numbers, this, that, this and that? And we was comparing us to different cities. And the gentleman back there in the wheelchair just said, look, how can you compare oranges to apples? When our, when Ms. Blanche, every time we ask for something. Well, it's not finished, we can get this, with this administration, it's always something. We have corn flakes, no milk, we got coffee, no sugar. What we're doing is, I guess you'll see it coming up later, that we partnering with this city, with that city for this, that, this, that and another. But here's the problem, the problem is, we got to have a base. To pull all these numbers from. And the only base that, the study that we have, is the only study we have is comparison to other cities. And we are unique from other cities. So, instead of trying to fill in a void for like I say. The lack, well, derelict duty. For people a- and to add, if you remember, when this administration first came in. The lies were told about all the money was stolen, we don't have this, we don't have that, we don't have this. And this administration just sat up here to try to skirt around that. Oh, I came in with such a deficit, I had to do this and I had to do that, no. What the problem is, the deficit is sitting right there. And they're comparing us to different cities. And the only way a doctor gonna operate on his brain, he's not gonna look at my MRI. And this is what the problem is, before that we can go anywhere farther with any of this. We need to have the baseline study for Apaca, not from a consultant. And everyone in here know that this administration is good on hiring consultant. It's one thing that I thank God for today on this day, on my birthday. That I have is some citizens finally coming out to see the underhanded crap that this administration do.
Sebastian Hall, thirty-nine oh one, Rolling Hills Lane, thank you for your citizens that are coming out for the first time. We always say government, local government is the most important government, not federals local, what happens here on the local level, we dictate that. So, for you first timers, I'm gonna say again, welcome, please don't let this be your last time. There's a simple fix to all this, we just don't have too many good people getting involved with what's going on. You bring a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of experience, resources that you all have. That's what you wanna bring to your community to make your community safe and make your community thrive, but it takes all of us, sharing our knowledge, our wisdom. Our professionalism, our training, our experience, all that's what make a, a thriving community. So, when you see. When you see, when, when you see, when you see, when we see the outrage. That's why we have the outrage, because we come here over and over and nothing is being done. And you laugh, you twiddle your hands and you look away and you say, sit down, boy. This is why you have the outrage, this is why you have, don't have the decorum that you're looking for. This is a very simple process, you're showing itemized list of what's wrong, what need to be fixed. What it's gonna cost to get fixed and it's very simple and you present that to the people, it's very simple. But we're going around and around, round and around about all of this, when it's a very simple process, a very simple process, thank you.
Um, I know that it was mentioned that obviously.
Name and address again, please sir.
Oh, Rob Josephson, Oak Hill Reserve, sorry about that. Um, I know it was mentioned that, you know, this obviously is not gonna gain any resolution today, it looks that way. The only thing I'm asking is, this letter will need to be sent back out to the citizens so that we can review it. And also, you're gonna need to include the garbage charge, which was not in these letters. But I feel that the commu- that the community of Apaca and the citizens need to have another letter clarifying once this all gets, you know, settled out.
Okay, um, I don't wanna point fingers, I'm not gonna talk about process, I'm new here, what's been done in the past. I wanna talk about the actual issue that we're dealing with right now at hand. Now the is, now the issue, if you look at this document that's in front of you, is that a ten percent increase. You're still gonna be operating in the reserves at five point six million dollars. We don't have a reserve, plain and simple. If you wanna fill that hole, that five point, or that six million dollars, five point six million dollars, is gonna have to come from somewhere. And the most likely place is gonna be the general fund, we're gonna be transferring those funds from the general fund into the water. So, all you're doing is subsidizing the water with other fees and taxes from the general. So, that's just the stark truth, that's just the stark reality. We're looking at that purple line, we went through the process last week of these are the things that we can cut, so we can bring the rate down. We got it to this point, right here, to a point where it's actually balanced and you can see there that there isn't any funding from the reserves. Which, so everybody knows here, there are no reserves, zero, there's nothing to tap into, this fund has gotten to that point. So, you have to, you have to ask, there's no raises on here, this is all operating. Appar- operating in capital, this is to maintain the water system, the water at the sewer and the reclaimed water. So, the stark reality is, is a, a decision has to be made of how we're going to fund the system. I'm just being blunt, that's how it has, you see those red numbers there, we don't have those, we do not have.
I think we understand that.
Okay, I, everyone here is gonna understand that too.
Well, I think they understand that, they just, again, it's an increase and we just need to be able to justify it correctly and educate everyone on the same page, I think that's it.
And I argue that the justification's right in front of you.
I don't know where some of these numbers came from, and neither do the residents, they came from Raftellis, Raftellis got it from somewhere, we just gotta see the equal sign, that's all everyone's asking for.
I guess the question is, has this been, ever been an issue in years past, or is it just this year?
We've never done this big of an increase.
And basically, Raftellis just gave.
It is what it is.
Yeah, it is, based on the rate increase, they just gave us the revenue projections, or what, that top line. So, and with the original one with the forty percent, that came from a four hundred and eighteen million dollar capital program. That's what we gotta rebank. That included two expansion facilities and, and all of that for water and wastewater. So, that's why we trying to push those out so that the, next year, the rate increase won't be as much, and in twenty seventy, it won't be as much.
But we don't know that though, right? We don't know that for facts yet.
That's what we are working on.
Right.
Yes, but the, it, what is set for twenty twenty-five would be the twenty-three point seven five. Is, what we trying to complete now is to minimize that impact going forward. Miscellaneous revenue is basically going back to this slide here where we're trying to collect more revenue on the zero read meters. We try to figure out a way to estimate that because we don't have any readings and probably generate additional revenue. We don't know. No, no, it's in this fund, just in this fund.
We wanna, they wanna make sure we got everybody that's got a meter is paying.
Yeah.
Yes, but it's, it's, how many are we, do we have that aren't paying anything?
I think it's just some that have the zero reads.
Right.
If they had a reading before, we do it based on that previous reading, but if we have no data, you know, that's less than, no, that's six hundred.
Six hundred, so six hundred are not, not paying anything.
And that, that some have readings and some don't, so that's just like, like about six hundred out of thirty thousand.
So, and, and of those, could be that they're, you know, they have a place in the mountains or, where, you know, it's a, it's a, this is their second home, not their primary home.
Right, it's some of the new subdivisions that need that additional flex net put on. So.
But, so go back in that, so if we take the, let's take the twenty-five budget and, which is the ten percent. And um, that's twenty-nine million. Four twenty-two, four, four thirty-four times point nine. Our budget last year was twenty-six million, I, I, you don't have the, the, the actual.
No, I don't have it right in front of me.
So, it looks like it was a twenty-six million dollar budget, so we've gone up from twenty-six, twenty-six.
To the thirty-five, look at the thirty-five, the bottom line is thirty-five at ten percent.
Right, the thirty-five, but if you look at the, it'd be interesting to have the, I mean, if we had the uh, the twenty-four budget. So, we could see where the, the big, are they, I don't think it's payroll, payroll's probably five percent, well, we haven't added. Other than two new positions, jurors and then um.
That was it, yeah, no, actually, it was just that one, and that's a hundred and nine thousand.
Okay.
You got some salary wage increase, you got adjustments related to the um, salary study that are reflected in here.
Right.
And you just have some other operating increase, the transfer is the same. So, it'll be in that, and capital probably went up a little bit.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think we've, we've heard from the residents pretty consistently, we beat this up pretty well, what, what's the will of the council, I guess, moving forward? Well, we.
We need this tentative.
So, I mean, what are, what are our options here as far as getting another. Hearing in or another?
I thought we were headed, if I, if I may, so, to setting, go ahead and proceeding in a tentative manner. And then coming back to see if there's additional cuts that we can entertain, I'm talking to the council.
It was a pretty consistent sentiment though.
I mean, I, it, you won't be able to get another notice out, if we, you have to go through that process again, we're talking three, four, three months.
Three months?
I gotta get it out, that's, and get them scheduled to do a special run, which is, that's gonna have to be in advance. And it's gonna cost another thirty thousand.
Do we have to do another?
Do you want the notice to go to them, and then first, we have to determine what we gonna tell them. What kind of increase are we gonna tell them, so we have to do that first.
Have to figure out what that number is.
Yes, exactly, and then send it out, that's, that's like three months. That's why we had the workshops and I made it very clear in that workshop, I'm sending the letters out with the forty percent, forty percent fifteen. And the ten percent is noted in here in the letter, it's just the rates are not there and they haven't been included in the past. For garbage, but it is, the, the same as it has been in the previous years, but I understand the need. So, we're trying to move forward, I thought, with going ahead and setting the tentative budget. And we can talk at that meeting, what else are you looking for, what else do you wanna cut? But it's no point in sending a letter out until you tell me what rates you wanna look at, cause that includes.
I'm not sure that, and I, and that's not what I think, I think we're missing. I'm not sure that, and I, and that's not what I think. I think we're missing the point here. It's not that we want more cuts. Residents want to be properly notified of what's changing and why it's being changed. We sent out a letter that said forty percent. I came to the workshop expecting forty percent. Then a slide comes up that says twenty percent. We added some more things in and it got to twenty-three point seven five percent. The residents just want to be informed.
I guess uh, you, we can send out letters after you approve it or you want them to question the twenty-three point seven five percent? I'm like, what is the added step? If I send out a notice saying twenty-three point seven five, you want more residents to come out and discuss it? Are you gonna cut it? Then we, if they say they don't want twenty-three point seven five, you want to go down to twenty? You want me to send out more letters at the twenty percent?
Maybe.
You see what I'm saying?
If it's to educate the residents properly.
Uh, well.
I think that's some of the biggest issue in City of Apocca historically is that we just haven't educated residents properly and they don't trust our government.
Well, the decision has to come before the notification. We need to present a balanced budget. No, no.
But we amend budgets constantly. Every month we do that.
Yeah, but it's a balanced budget.
Go in with a balanced budget.
Have to have a balanced budget.
And then we can, we can adjust in November if we want. We can go down.
Mm-hmm.
We can go up on, on rates. We'd have to let them know, but.
Go through the process.
Not, not, not adding the warum, but.
Yeah, with the rate.
So, I mean.
So you can set the tentative budget tonight, set the tentative mileage rate tonight. And if you have, wanna have a workshop in between before we have the final to go through some of this, we can advertise the workshop. You know, to, to get, go more over into the four oh one fund. And let the public come out to the workshop, but as far as a notice is concerned, that's a different process. And like I said, we've met the requirement of the ordinance as it is right now.
I understand that.
Yeah, and I can't put a notice out without a decision made. And if the decision keeps changing, you see what I'm saying? So each time. It started with the forty percent decision was made. I think the mayor had heard the outcry in trying to accommodate that. He said, let's see if we can get it down to twenty percent. And we came back and we said, let's see if we can get it up with these additional things in there, which was about a million dollars. They brought us up to twenty-three point seven five percent. Keep in mind, it's money coming from both ends. This fund is cutting. We're trying to minimize the impact on the citizens. It's in a deficit.
And staff's hard work is not lost with me. There's employees don't think that. I don't think it's lost in our residents either. It's just. We got bills to pay.
And we can't pay them. Without the money. So, I mean. That, that would be, I think, Jacob, the recommendation is to try to proceed with. As it is right now and coming back because it'll be before October first and have another workshop if see if you want to do something different.
Let me ask you this. So it takes three months to get a new notice out. We would be able to. Extrapolate a number of, we'll call it lost revenue without having those increases over three months. And then we can balance how we need to from there.
Okay. If I give you, we do estimated billing, okay? We can, in order to change how that is done, that is a whole system process, our billing system. We would have to work with Edmunds, our lovely system, to modify that methodology.
But aren't we doing that with, and a resident brought that up, with the um, estimated no read, zero read meters? Aren't we already doing?
Not yet. That's something that we want to look into.
So that's.
That's six hundred customers.
That's not an accurate number at all then?
What, what?
The zero read is.
Top of the forty-six thousand?
Correct.
It's just, that's the number that we're estimating that we can potentially increase. And we try to do something with that because those are manual adjustments, okay? As we do each billing cycle.
We, we did talk about, can we, you know, like the estimated reads, are we as accurate as we can be or, or we, could we bump those a little bit to, you know, to get closer to? But you, you're basing it on last year's, you know, last August versus this August, so it's, it's.
Yeah, it's a rolling twelve months. That's how it was set up. That's how the system's been doing.
Explain to me, so if I buy a new house and it was a family of ten living in it before and it's just my wife and two kids now. Reader, the meter's wrong, I'm getting charged for the family from last year, not accurately to what.
Only if it's being estimated.
And vice versa.
Yeah.
That we're undercharging.
Yeah.
Or multiple people, multi-generational family, which is very common now as well.
Well, you're talking thirty thousand customers and, you know, when you have the six thousand, you know, down. And I'm just saying six hundred is, like I said, those are some kind of manual adjustment as time allows, as we do each billing cycle. That's why it could be done a little different.
So let me ask you this too. If we were to table this tonight, we'd have to table the. Budget meeting for tonight as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to move forward and coming back because it is tentative. That means you do have an opportunity to change. That's what I'm trying to.
Again, I'm not, my, I, I, my goal is not to change it. We've gone through, we've all spent a lot of time on this as well. It's staff has spent much more. The goal is not to change it. It's to educate our resident, educate our residents and make sure they're understanding, not happy, but understanding of why and where and how.
And.
And an education process wouldn't require all the public noticing. That's something we can do right away.
Well, it would because the notice went out to thirty thousand residents to educate them incorrectly.
I'm saying we couldn't do it by mail because yeah, that would take a long time to get through the process of getting through.
That, that, the mailing process is what it's.
Yeah, it's the mailing process.
Yeah. And that's if they, if they would do another one. I mean, they're gonna charge. You're talking about you gotta pay for the mailing and the postage.
Well, again, and I want to go back to the fact that we all agreed to the forty percent, let's send that out. And then unilaterally behind the scenes, it got reduced to twenty. Which then confused a lot of people and, and again, all the residents here are basing off the letter they received, which doesn't make this council look educated at all. So. There's a lot of misinformation. That's what I'm trying to correct here. And it's been a s- a, a sentiment that's been echoed very consistently in all their comments. Uh, of that same thing. So, again, I don't want to belabor his point. We got other things we need to take care of tonight, but. If we were to table this, do I need to table if I motion that for a date certain or can we do this? What does that look like?
I think we, again, I keep saying this, if that's the will, I thought we were going towards a tentative. I mean, you could, somebody makes a motion, I guess.
But we just gotta make sure we got the time, but, so we just, we need to think through the. Timing here, um, so we gotta have it.
But I don't know what we're gonna gain. That's what I'm, I'm just trying to get clear on that.
Yeah.
Because we can't send out the notices.
Yeah, we.
What we're gonna gain is public education.
Correct.
And understanding of the reason behind the rate increase.
Okay.
That's, that's what we gain.
Okay, through what means? Public. Yeah, that's where I'm at. Cause I don't want to leave here and not answer then be back here again.
We could have it, well, maybe not tomorrow, but by, by Friday, we could probably have something on the website. We could get it in the newspaper on.
Do you want to do that? Newspaper, website?
Social media.
Yeah, and we've got, we've got all the, the people that get, you know, our, our um, monthly um.
Newsletter.
Water bills by, by email. They, we could do that.
But it goes out in cycles. That could take a month.
Well, we could, we could do everybody at one time. I'm sure that's.
Not inco you can't, but yeah, that's the special run. I'm just being real because I went through this last year.
Right.
I'm being real though. And we had to go to FedEx and another place. They were.
No, I'm saying, but we just, the e- the email addresses we got, which are, we were at half, half of our.
I'll see what Inco can do with the ones, but if it's not in that cycle, they consider it to be a special run.
Even an email, but.
Yes.
But it's not, it's peanuts. I mean, pennies.
I, I can, I can see. So what do you want? To go out with the twenty-three point seven five percent? Just a notice to all the res- residents with that?
Well, I think, and the whole goal again, it's, and I hate that we're doing this on a flight, absolutely hate that, is that if we're gonna go this route. Is that we have not only the twenty-three point seven five, all the details too that link to everything. I want the uh, Raftellus report linked. So they can just click on it, that it's easy to get to. The slides that they presented, which was, it was hours-long presentation that we went through. I want that linked. I, we want all the detailed information.
Well, that was, that was the impact fees. That wasn't, I don't think that was. That was the uh, four oh one. I don't think they've done a presentation on four oh one.
We, it's again, it was.
Four oh three.
Of the study.
Yeah.
And all they have is the revenue um, projections and what was causing the forty percent and how we could minimize it.
Yeah.
And what I just shared was, I got a spreadsheet that they sent, said this is the four hundred and eighteen million dollar, you know. Capital projects that contributing to this. That's all I have. Emails and that spreadsheet. We are in discussions with them to finalize it.
What, what does the rest of the council prefer?
How many customers do we have on the utility in the water?
Probably about twenty-seven or thirty thousand.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven to thirty thousand.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Anderson, any thoughts?
So a few thoughts. I think for one, I think it's to be kind of clear that the expectation is. What I'm hearing is people saying they can't afford an increase. So I don't want to set the expectation that we're, we're looking at the budget to. Cause I don't, I, I've heard the numbers. I mean, we spent a lot of time, weeks on this and there's gonna have to be an increase. And to set the expectation, which I think, of course, they want to be educated to understand where the numbers are coming from. I think that's important as well. But the expectation that, I, I don't see how in the budget that we're gonna go below the twenty-three percent based off of the need. Um, I think more so the educational component, so they can understand what those needs are, so they can understand what they're paying for. I think that's what I'm hearing. In addition to that, if people that can't afford the increases, are we able to link to other organizations and services that can help offset their thirty dollars a month? Um, so the increases, it just got, it has to happen. And we all, all five of us have agreed that there has to be an increase. And this is not, we all voted for, for the increase. But I think it's the educational component that we, a lot of us, a lot of them, the residents are, are missing and they just want to be informed. So I think there needs to be some form of, of a meeting um, with some type of presentation so they can understand where those numbers are coming from. So they can understand the value add. And I think that's what it is. They're saying, what are we getting for this increase?
Right.
So.
And.
And I think, I think, you know, we, we're working on an action plan as well. I know we've. Worked on public services and utility billing. I mean, it's, it's, it's two departments working together to, to. To make sure we're getting all the revenue that, that, you know, is due us. That's, you know. Um, that's a, you know, obviously that's, that helps, but it's not a.
It won't turn around.
Game changer. It, it, we definitely mean, they need to pay what they're supposed to pay. So it's not a question of should they be paying whatever they're obligated to pay.
Yeah, we can explain all those details. We can have a workshop next week just to go over that, but set things down.
I think they want to know what they're paying for. I mean, that's what I care what they're paying for. And then the other, you have half that don't, they're okay with the increase. If they understand what the increase is for and where these numbers are coming from.
Yeah.
Then you have the other half of people saying, listen, I can't afford it, no matter what it is, I can't afford the increase. Unfortunately, there's gonna be an increase.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I don't want to set the expectation that. You know, there won't be an increase. So there will be, but they need to just understand where the numbers are coming from. So I think that's what it is.
Understand. And that's why we're saying if we set it tonight, we can have a workshop next week and go strictly over that.
Does this, the approval of this, does this have to be a five oh vote or is it the mileage rate that has to be a five oh vote?
The mileage rate.
So let's keep this moving forward then. What, do, I mean, I'm not winning people over, so. Well, I mean, the choices you guys need to make.
Well, let, let me say, uh, we originally agreed on the forty percent and that's what you sent out as we directed you to do so. And, and we heard from the public that forty percent was not acceptable. And so the mayor heard that as well. And so therefore he went back and took it down to the twenty percent. And then we came back to the workshop and you presented the twenty percent, then this council was not in agree with the twenty percent. Because there were some lying items that we insisted be in the budget. And so that's how we went from the twenty back up to twenty-three point seven five. So what I'm hearing is, is that. Even though they may not be able to afford it or may not be in agreement with the twenty-three percent increase, that they just want to know. What that money i- is covering.
Right.
And so. If you're able, you, you spoke about possibly emailing or putting on the website. How that twenty-three percent is being used. I'm okay with coming, you know, waiting till Tuesday. If you can get all that information to them by email or however. On the website by Tuesday, because I understand mailing is out of the question.
Correct.
So I, I'm okay with you get that information with them by email or post on the website so it's available to them. To wait until Tuesday and then go ahead and approve this budget. Uh, a- and the rate increase, because it's obvious it's, it's gonna be the twenty-three percent because we have no other choice. But I think their basic concern is what the money's been used for. And so that can be given to them by Tuesday. And if we have the legal turn, time to post that by Tuesday, then let's do that.
And let me share with you, the details will be what I have here.
Mm-hmm.
And taking, just breaking the salaries and wages in fringe is what it is, just giving the line out of details that you already have. For the other operating expenses in the capital. That, that's that detail.
And I think Jacob also.
Yeah, he, but, yeah, we talked.
And we could do an alert, we could do an alert.
Yeah.
Rob could do an alert. And the only thing I would add to this, this, this slide, Blanche, is the twenty, um, the twenty-four budget.
Yeah, I would do that.
Okay, so even though they got, you got the ten percent, I'd go ahead and wipe out the ten percent. And the tw- fifteen percent, so we'll.
Say that again, mayor.
I would wipe out the ten and the fifteen percent and start with the, 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 the twenty, the twenty-three point seven five and then the forty, which was what, you know, was initially.
Add the twenty-four.
And then, and right, so we got an extra column there. So that would, that would help.
Okay.
And, and can, and can you also show the items that we deleted from the budget?
Okay, then they, I can show them.
The, the previous slide.
I could do it on the next, another page, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, I will. Yes, I will. And this, this will be posted on the website.
And we email.
Not email. I have to work with Inco on that. We probably have, out of the. Out of the twenty-seven thousand customers, it may be, let's say, ten thousand or fifteen thousand that may have emails. We still have to work through that, that outsourcing company that we have to send that out.
We'll.
We'll figure something out, but I, I can't guarantee that part with them and it may be a cost. I'm telling you the truth.
Whatever the cost.
Okay, all right. We'll see what we can do, but it definitely will be on the website. Thank you. Everybody does not have emails.
I, I, I believe we've come to a, an agreement that. We're gonna work on this to try and give our residents the information that they are requesting.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll come back on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
And have a final vote on this.
We'll come back on Tuesday. We'll try to say at six thirty, I thought. Okay, so that, and what we'll do at the um, special budget, special budget meeting or first budget hearing. We'll set the rates as well as the mileage, as well as the tentative budget and then announce the other meeting.
And that's gonna happen on Tuesday?
That will have to happen on Tuesday. If we're gonna uh, postpone the meeting that we have this evening.
So we'd be tabling this and then table the meeting tonight as well?
Yeah, when we start the meeting, we'll end up table and everything and reschedule it till that day. Now, I gotta check and make sure, I'm saying this, because we can't have. Our first budget hearing on the same dates as Orange County and somebody else. Yes, O C P S.
Do we know? Thank you.
And I don't have a.
And we can have.
You can't have our budget hearings on the same day that they have theirs.
And why is that?
That's.
So that residents can stay involved with what they're being charged? So there's not overlap?
I just learned that.
Yeah. That's a re- a requirement by um, property appraisers office.
Ten.
Ten. Can't do. Cause I had to send our date to the property appraisers office. It's a lot to this. It's not. It's not that it's not, but if we, and I'm gonna stop. I mean, if we do, like I said, it's tentative. I can still put the same information out and we still have the final budget hearing.
My fault is we would do, we'd go ahead and do the meeting at five. My thoughts, we would do, we'd go ahead and do the meeting at five fifteen, do, set everything, but we come back and do a workshop after the fact.
Exactly. And then do what we need to do in the final. That's where I hear.
Well, that's,
That's one.
Yeah.
Right, well, can you repeat the second option? Because now we realize that September tenth is not good.
The second option is,
Because Orange County, is it Orange County you said, or O C P S? Oh, O C P S.
The second option, as I heard from the mayor, is that we proceed tonight with approving the rates, setting the tentative mileage rate, setting the tentative budget, so I can get that advertised, and set, scheduling, announcing the scheduling of the final budget hearing. In between that time, we have a workshop, okay? And I also post like what he just mentioned on the website and see what we can do in regards to emails. Now, I can assure you, even if we get the emails, I don't, I can't guarantee that that's gonna go out to them on that, you know, in time for that workshop. I'm just being real. I don't want to falsely mislead anyone, because I've been through this process and rushed this process last year, because they would not do a special run last year, and we tried FedEx and everybody else in the world.
Okay, if, if we're going to approve the tentative mileage rate and tentative budget at five fifteen tonight, why are we having the workshop?
Be, I guess, to show that citizens can come out and voice their,
How we got to that number.
I thought, I thought we were sending that information.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it on the website still.
Yeah.
I'm gonna see what I can, I can still send it out, but I can't guarantee it to be out in time for a workshop, but I can still send it out, and we don't need the workshop.
Well, I think we should do the workshop anyway.
Well, he wants the workshop. Oh, we can do both.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we do both.
We can do both. And then when it goes out, it may take a minute for it to go out, but at least they'll go out with the final decision, is that's what you want to do. And I'll try to add as much information as I can.
Ma'am, 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 this is, we're, we're, we're closed right now. We, we're, okay. So, what, what, ma'am, 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 it, this is, we're just back to the council. So, what, what's the pleasure?
Did, did you understand, Commissioner Smith, what was being proposed?
Is there a third option?
There's either Monday or,
Or the last, the last Wednesday of the month. Could we flip it around and make the eighteenth the first reading? Okay, is that possible?
Can make the eighteenth the first, okay, and then we gotta come back that following week.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
So, I'm saying September twenty-fifth?
Okay. You, you can, you can. As long as nobody's having a meeting on the eighteenth, hold on. Did you?
Yeah, we checked.
I have to check. I have to check. I think we're good, but I have to check. I think we're good.
Yeah, I, I just saw it, yeah.
Okay, we're good. Okay.
Good.
So, yeah, we can push everything off to the eighteenth, but, and I'll put some on the website and let you know about any email situation.
Mr. Anderson, there's your third option.
Perfect.
Okay, okay.
Is everybody good with that then?
All right.
Because it felt like we could not go past the eighteenth, but that's okay.
No, we had mentioned the twenty-fifth before, yeah.
So, the eighteenth, we will,
Yeah, Mr. Anderson, can you repeat that, please?
As I understand it, Commissioner Nesta, we're going to push this off until the eighteenth.
Table it to the eighteenth.
Yes. And also, the meeting that we have scheduled for the first budget hearing tonight, we're gonna make the first budget hearing be on the eighteenth. I do have to notify the property appraisers office of that change. And then we'll schedule our final budget hearing for that following Wednesday, which would be the twenty-fifth.
The twenty, which is the twenty-four.
It's the twenty-four, twenty-fifth, okay, twen- twenty-fifth.
And nobody's having their budget meeting on the twenty-fifth, right?
Hope not.
No, that, that, that one's good. And what time are we doing these?
Um, I think you'd like six o'clock. We can go at six o'clock. The one on the eighteenth is already scheduled at six o'clock. We just gotta readvertise it to, as the first budget hearing instead of the,
So, we'll do it before the meeting, before the council meeting on the eighteenth?
Yes, I guess so. Yeah, because I said seven. Do you want it to start earlier then?
So, let's start at six for the, an hour enough time?
So, six?
I hope so.
Okay, so.
Okay.
We'll have a six.
On the eighteen. And then, on the Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, for the second meeting for the budget, we start also at eighteen hundred hours?
On the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
Um, it has to be after five.
Okay, so that would be,
I know you're doing the military time. It has to be after five.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Right, that's where we start at six.
Okay.
Is that it? Still got sanitation to do, don't forget.
Well, do we just table it, because we're gonna,
You trying to table sanitation too?
Or do you want to just table it as well?
Let's table it as well.
We'll have to table it as well.
There seem like there were some questions about that as well.
We've got, Josh is here, but, anyway, okay. Um, all right, so I'm looking, let's see here.
So, we're tabling also, we have to make a motion now for that one.
Okay, so I look for a motion to table the resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three until six o'clock on the eighteenth.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed motion carries now.
And,
Uh, anybody wants to speak on the resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two? That maybe won't be here for next, wait, I'm sorry, which?
Not twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-one. Is anybody, anybody want to speak on, or do you just, can we just table that one?
Well, if they're here, we're ready.
Right, I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, nobody wants to speak on that, then we'll look for a motion to, um, table resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one until, um, September eighteenth at six o'clock.
So.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed motion carries now. All right, city council report.
Can we take a quick break? Five-minute break? Thank you.
All right. All right. Call meeting back to order. Commissioner Anderson, you want to start us out?
Um, absolutely. So, I really don't have much to report. So, really quick, don't have a lot to report. Uh, one of the things I want to say is, I've been receiving a lot of different forms of communication in regards to the nonprofit funding. Um, it is a lying item in the budget that have not been approved, but once there's more information, um, I will definitely reach out to you all that reached out to me. So, there has been a lot of positive feedback. The community, the community is excited about the possibility of having that nonprofit funding. So, um, I'm excited to hear the, um, the feedback from the community in regards to that. And that was something I will continue, to continue to advocate for. In addition to that, um, I will start having office hours here on the first and third Wednesday from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty. And you can also start, um, checking my social media site, and I'll have different times with there as well. But for now, that'll, that'll be my set schedule in regards to office hours, and that is it.
All right. Commissioner Velazquez. Okay. Commissioner Smith.
Well, I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Anderson said. I also received some great feedback on the fact that we set aside the money for the nonprofits. And so, they're looking forward to when we get the guidelines put in place in order those funds can be used. Also, just want to remind everybody, we have Hispanic heritage, uh, activities coming up, uh, this month. And so, want to make sure you come out and participate in those, be involved in those activities as well. And, uh, look forward to our first budget meeting.
You got it. All right. Commissioner Nesta?
Absolutely. And I just want to thank the residents for everyone that came out today. Um, please come out the eighteenth as well to make your voice heard. It's important to make sure that we're, we're representing you correctly up here. Um, want to mention, there's a few things I need to go over and just get some feedback on, or that I made a motion on. Um, don't need a motion on this, but just want to let you know, I'll be hosting, and this is for all the residents, a town hall meeting. It'll be September town hall meeting. It'll be September twelfth, twenty twenty four, from six to eight P M. Right here in city council chamber. It's a Thursday, Thursday evening, September twelfth, from six to eight P M. It's just an open forum to be able to have some communication with the residents. Another touch point to discuss whatever you need to, if you have concerns, if you want to see what plans are going on, just to get some feedback from residents. And again, as many touch points as possible with my residences is really important to me. So I have flyers for that. You'll see, um, some social media, uh, things as well. But again, it's going to be here in the council chambers, September twelfth, from six to eight P M. Um, let me see here. The next one is, are we gonna, well, we, mayor, are you going to stop recording public comment again today as well?
Yes.
What was that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I will be making a motion here, but the, the point is we need to continue and not have any interruption, since we've been doing this for years, of public comment being broadcast. Um, it's a civil rights violation and we definitely don't need the American Civil Liberties Union to be involved in the capacity. Um, so I'll make a motion that we continue to live stream on YouTube, the entirety of the agenda from gavel to gavel. So that's the motion.
Motion?
I'm sorry, do we keep that motion again?
That we live stream, as we have in the past for years, the entirety of the agenda from gavel to gavel, from the call to order to mayor's report and public comment.
Oh, before, no, I, I have a question for the attorney. Is that a civil rights violation? I just want to make sure we're not violating any type of rights.
Uh, I will say that, no, you're not violating civil rights to not broadcast your meetings because your meetings are not required to be broadcast.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, the second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye. Was that aye to oppose or nay to oppose?
Uh, to oppose.
Okay, so then it's three to two again. Um, which is the mayor, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Smith.
Yep.
The ayes are.
Okay.
I'm consistent in the fact that I feel that, uh, the public should have a voice.
Okay. And Commissioner Smith, you agree with that as well to not record anymore?
Uh, yes, as long as the, uh, voice recording is still going, uh, that's all we're required to do by law.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Yes. Uh, the next one up is a, um, speaking of budgets, this is very timely. Um, infrastructure talks of everything that people have discussed, uh, today with increases and, and the amount of money we're pulling from the mattress to balance the budget. A moratorium is, needs to come to discussion, come in front of us. I think it's something that needs to be on the agenda either next week or next month. Um, it needs to be a, a moratorium for six months, both residential, commercial, real estate. Not only to give our staff time to catch up and create a plan, but also for our infrastructure to do the same, for us to budget correctly. We're going so fast on the development side that we're not able to keep up at all. And I brought some examples too. The city of Zephyr Hills, um, they have a moratorium due to water supply concerns. The city of Florida City, uh, they're doing a moratorium for six months for planning and infrastructure concerns and, and to give staff time for planning. The town of Dundee, also, moratorium for water supply concerns. City of New Smyrna Beach, flooding issues and infrastructure concerns. City of Homestead, infrastructure, school capacity, road capacity concerns. And St. Pete Beach, uh, there's too much commercial, they were focused too much on commercial hospitality, they want more residential. So again, it helps to provide time for our staff to catch up. Um, it was a sentiment that's been throughout this whole budget is that we don't have enough staff in place, that obviously our infrastructure is failing. And we're just building, building, building. And I think it's time that this gets brought up and we put it to a vote for the residents to also give some input on it. And then it was, came up tonight that.
Can I add three more cities and that would be?
Uh, Coe is one of them. Yep. Correct. So there's, there's quite a few. I mean, we're not first to this by any means, and I think it's important, and thank you for that, Commissioner Velasquez. It's important that we have these, that they're already paving the path of how to do this properly. I know, um, Attorney Shepherd, there are very specific thresholds we need to be meeting, very specific items, which is fine, we can do that. I think now is the time though. I think this budget season really showed that we're not ready for the development that's coming. We can't stop what's already been approved, but we can stop annexing and doing the items that, that are still yet to come. Um, so I make a motion that we have that on either the next agenda or the agenda after that, a moratorium.
We'll be happy to, let's do a workshop, the first meeting in October. I mean, I think that would be obviously a great.
That, that's up to you all.
Yeah.
I, I do think that, um, well, if you want me to wait till my report, I can talk to you about moratoriums because I've done them multiple times, but they have to be narrowly tailored, they have to have a specific end date. They have to have a, a planning purpose that is articulable as opposed to, we just need a pause. We have to say, okay, we're getting a study, we're doing, we, there's some things we, in which right now, we don't even know how much a study would cost. All of which is to say that it's not just, well, let's suppose a moratorium on what, building permits, multifamily, single family, uh, just commercial. Are, are we doing it on office, et cetera, et cetera? So I can't just draft a moratorium without knowing what it is I'm trying to stop and why I'm trying to stop it while you figure out what it is needs to be done.
Okay.
Let's, let's put together, we could do a workshop, the first, um, or just as a part of it, do a presentation. When we do a presentation, the first meeting in October.
I can send out, uh, multiple moratorium, we have one in place right now in Eatonville for impact fees. So I have no problem, I can, it'll give you some ideas about what goes into moratorium. You have to have exceptions for vested rights and a whole number of other things. And you need to say it's going to be from this date to this date. And you really, really need to move heaven and earth to make sure that when that date comes to the end, you're done and ready.
Sure. And, and to your point, are you able to provide samples and things like that, examples of what we're doing and how it's framed, what it looks like? Okay. I think that'd be very valuable. It's, I think this budget season just showed that so much that.
And I support that because I asked to do that five years ago and was told it was illegal. So I'm.
We've got a better attorney now. A different attorney, I'll say that. Uh, and then the final one that I have, and I know we've all received, and I just received a final communication today, uh, or the most recent communication from, uh, Mr. Shepherd in reference to, um, this commission as a whole and their qualifications to serve. Um, there's documents floating around on social media that I don't have an opinion on one way or the other, but it, we need to have some type of action taken to make it one way, a finalized action from a judge that says, hey, one, two, all of you, none of you are, are qualified to serve based on the state statutes as well as our city charter. So that we can push it through and be done with it one way or the other. Um, I, what we need to do, and we've done in the past, is just bring in an outside counsel, not to grab an opinion, but to file for a declaratory judgment. We've done that in the past, again, without making a motion, that's happened. Um, spent thousands on that actually to make that happen. I think that would be, it would create confidence, which I've been talking about all tonight, for our residents. And I think that's what we need to do is just say, look, it's done. This is a done point, one way or the other. Have all of us reviewed of all of our qualifications as it states in the charter and the state statute and engage an outside party, an attorney. So Attorney Shepherd, I don't know if it's something you want to run with to engage an outside party. And I, and I have an attorney, um, Sandridge, that's based out of Tampa, that I think would be qualified. They've done incredible work on the civic side. Um, or it's something that I can obviously engage for us and, and talk to them and then connect you guys. So whatever you prefer, we can run with so that we can put this to bed and not just have opinions. Let's have a deck action and call today.
Yeah. If, if the council wants to direct me to get somebody to, to do this, whether it's Sandridge, who I do not know, or you know, it, it's not a complicated thing in terms of the, the mechanics of filing something. But it needs to have due consideration because of what you're actually saying. It's not as simple as saying, well, we're going to go to the court and ask for an opinion. That's not what a deck action is about. A deck action requires there to be somebody on the other side with one opinion and you of a different opinion. And then you ask the court, if you have legal standing, to determine based on their view of the law and the facts, what is real and what is the right opinion? And even that subject appeal and all the other stuff that goes along with legal remedies. So, for example, and again, I assume we're adults here, so we can just call what it is. The emails that have been coming in have been dealt, involved Commissioner Anderson at, since before the election. All of those same people who are still complaining were told then, the action is to go to court on your own, as the opposing candidate or any other way, and have it reviewed then, not after the election, but before they did not choose to do so. So now what you're saying is that we would retain attorney to essentially bring a lawsuit against a city commissioner. So that definitely cannot be me, because I need to be able to give good advice to everybody and have them believe that it's coming from a place of, this is the law, not some personal animus. So that rules me out. But it does mean that whoever you hire, you're saying essentially sue Commissioner Anderson. So she can then get a lawyer and have the other side of the argument for why she is qualified and is rightly in that seat. And this lawyer you're hiring to advocate the opposite. It is not, here are all the facts, figure it out. That's not how a deck action works. It's advocacy, one hundred percent.
Understood. And I think that's, that's what's important right now is, is we've had different emails and, and communications, everybody has uh, on this matter. And I just, I want to put it to bed one way or the other. I think that's important. And we have so many different issues that we need to be focused on and not, this is not one of them. So I want to get this taken care of. Um, in the past, we've had, we've engaged attorneys that this whole council did not approve, um, that costs thousands of dollars to us. So this is no different in that capacity. Um, and, and our city manager had stated that, you know, you took an opinion that said everything's perfect, everything's fine, everyone did everything exactly what they should. It, it's, it's something that was done before you got here, so I, I, I'm surprised you took that opinion. It's a very staunch, strong opinion on that. Uh, so again, it's just to put this to bed one way or the other, call today and let's keep moving. Uh, we, like I said, we've got other infrastructure things we need to be dealing with, a moratorium, um, these rate increases, there's a lot that we need to deal with. So, um, let's put this to bed. Let's bring the facts to the table, have one side have the other, do what we need to do and keep moving.
Well, since it is about.
Who's filing the lawsuit?
It would be Attorney Sandridge.
No, no, he can't file a lawsuit. He can represent who he was filing.
I, I'll, I'll find you someone, including I'll, Mr. Sandridge or whoever that is. I, I don't, if that's what you decide you want to do.
So the city is bringing a lawsuit.
Bring you several names you can pick, whatever you want to do.
I'm not paying for anybody. That's, that's, if somebody wants to, to sue over whatever, that's.
I welcome any lawsuit.
Yeah, any lawsuit.
Please file a lawsuit.
Hallelujah, that's just crazy.
Okay, no problem.
Address is private and I'm protected. I welcome any lawsuit. And I'm qualified to sit in this seat.
Well, there's documents floating around, otherwise, and I don't have an opinion on that one way or the other. Like I said, it just needs to be finalized and everyone else has made an opinion on it up here, clearly. And, uh, again, it just creates confidence when we can say for sure, no matter what, this is accurate and there's nothing that's changed on it. So if, if the council as a whole can all say that for sure, you guys know, each one of us is duly qualified to serve. And you guys can make that statement to our residents? Then no problem, but it's, uh, it's a, something that's come up multiple times and it's not going to go away. Similar to moving public comment to the end and not broadcasting it. But for that, since you guys all understand what you're doing and, and have looked and reviewed and, and can guarantee that there's no issues there, then, then it is what it is at this point. So with that, I'm finished.
Okay. Jacob, you got anything?
Yeah, we have one thing. Uh, I sent all of you the, uh, there's this property, the Duke Energy property, there's a proposed contract to purchase that property. It's on two hundred and five East and Eighth Street. The idea is to have that, uh, that property be available for some kind of homelessness, like a, like an intake center. Uh, put it out to a competitive bid, bid to see who would want to take over that, put, put a facility there. Um, that, so I'm bringing that forward, just, uh, opening it up for discussion. If that's something we want to move forward with, uh, what your thoughts are.
So you know, there's, there's the piece next to it is we have a stormwater drain there and then we, we acquired by, I think, um, code enforcement violations, a neck, the neck strips. I think if you put all three pieces together, it'd probably be close to an acre. But anyway, so Duke Energy, we had a meeting with them. Um, it was a brown field site uh, that they couldn't get rid of. They've just now got it cleared, uh, for, for as far as a brown, a brown site, brownfield. And so, um, if there'll be, whether you'd be happy to sell it to us, if we want to purchase it, uh, obviously we don't have to purchase it, just, just try to get a, you know, we just want to get a feel from the, the council. Then obviously there's a couple of steps, because it's in the CRA, we have to go to the CRA first, um, to, to get their approval and we had to come back to council, uh, to get the final approval. And then as, as, um, Cliff Shepherd said, is, uh, we couldn't designate the property to anyone. We'd have to go back out to an RFP to do, somebody to run that center.
So it's, it's not an RFP, but it is a thirty day notice under one sixty-three, three eighty. Anytime you're disposing of, and disposing includes leasing, uh, property in the CRA, it's a thirty day minimum notice. You can do longer, uh, to solicit other people from the community or in organizations from the community who may wish to do the thing like you've subscribed it. When this is done, uh, and cities already have an idea who they'd like to do something, they generally script the notices. So they're very specific and tailored to, if, to the individual that they, or the business that they'd like to work with. I say this not because I think that's the way it should be, but that is the way it is. And in fact, this is a very common practice. So for example, um, going back, you know, more than a decade in the city of Maitland, when they were trying to plan a downtown and they had approach from only really one developer with great plans and intentions. Um, they did a whole lot of planning and talking, but no contracting until they got to the point where they had a fully formed idea. And then they put that fully formed idea in the thirty day notice. And there was obviously then, as it turns out, only one person that applied, one company that applied to be the developer. So that is, as weird as it may sound, that is a normal procedure and it's done all over the state. However, because of this thing, homeless shelter, there are multiple outfits out there potentially qualified and interested to do something. You could expect that you would probably get more than one response.
So now, I, I did discuss with you, because I had spoken with the Al County Commissioner and we have that building on Lust Road. And that was a building that, um, I felt that we can partner with, uh, Orange County because they have the, they have the money to invest in that building. So I don't see why we would want to purchase this property for the resource center when we can partner with Orange County and use the Lust Road building, which is actually, it, it has more access to the hospital, has access to, um, facilities that we would be able to, uh, re- refer anyone that comes into the resource center. So is that something that you would consider? Because.
First off, we.
Building that everyone sees on.
I think that's a, it's, we don't own that. I think we just lease that for a dollar a year from St. John's.
Right. But when I spoke to the county commissioner, they're having a meeting because there was a restriction on it.
Correct.
And so that's what they're negotiating right now. So that, that meeting will be taking place, I believe sometime this week.
That building's showing as if we own it.
Excuse me?
That building, twenty-eight hundred Lust Road is showing as if we own it.
Right, but it has a restriction. When St. John's, uh, deeded it to the city, which was unknown to me when we tried to offer it, I remember to, uh, a nonprofit, I was unaware that it was deeded, that it was deeded with restrictions. So I learned that it has a restriction. It could only be used for water or utility. So Orange County is right now in, uh, is having a meeting with St. John's to see if they can, um, remove that restriction. And the reason why it makes sense is because, uh, I believe, uh, Orange County has like two hundred and eighteen million dollars that they are dedicating to, uh, different, you know, projects. And one of them is a homeless shelter. So that would be, I guess, a great partnership that we can have something with Orange County. Especially since they have the funds.
I guess the question is, is, um, if they couldn't get those restrictions taken, if they couldn't take those. Sorry, I have a cold. If we couldn't get those restrictions taken off the property.
Right.
Would this be a good plan B?
This would be plan B, but I don't think we should vote on this right now.
Well, I'm not asking for a vote, just, uh, discuss it, if there's something we want to bring to the council.
At the, at the, at the next council meeting. But I just wanted to kind of give this information regarding Lust Road. Because for years, for as long as I've been here, um, you know, uh, we've had many organizations. Because for years, for as long as I've been here, you know, we've had many organizations who's asked about that building. And the last one that I have here was, if I'm not mistaken, was from Naomi Kids. She had actually had someone go out there and do an assessment of, of the building. So I have all that information, but when I reached out to the county commissioner, she did mention the restriction, which I was unaware of. And I do remember that that building was offered a few times, but I was unaware of the restriction that was on there from St. John's.
Well, let me ask.
Understanding is that the county commissioner is having a meeting, or the staff is having a meeting with St. John's.
So if the city owns the building, how is Orange County having a meeting to have the restrictions released?
Partner with us and put their, put their funds for their homeless shelter, shelter into Lust Road.
And you don't think they should be having the meeting with the citizens, they're the owner of the property?
I don't know.
I'm a little confused.
I'll have to talk to, well, then our mayor should actually contact our county commissioner.
Yeah, I I think if we own the property, that we should be involved in that.
Sure.
Discussion.
But it wasn't an option, I guess. Were you aware of the restriction?
No, I wasn't aware of the restriction, because we were trying to also get that for city service.
Yeah. Oh, okay, see? You were looking at it for city serves?
Yes.
That's what we, we, we talked about that before.
We did, but what was not, the information of the restriction was not given to any of us.
Right.
I learned about that restriction a few days, and I was like, I had no idea to have that restriction.
That's all I have.
Okay, Cliff?
Briefly, I just wanted to cover this issue that came up. So it, it's properly addressed. Dr. Homestead had sent me a case, I think I sent it to all of you all, or at least sent you a link. I didn't, I apologize, I'll be happy to send it. It's the Loesman versus City of Riviera Beach case. It's a Florida case, ended up at the Florida Supreme, at the U S Supreme Court. And I said then to her in writing that it didn't really apply. There are other things that actually do require us to look back at two thousand sixteen dash sixteen, our internal policy, and I will be bringing forth a new policy for you. But I wanted to read this very brief section, so we all understand that the case does not stand for the proposition that Dr. Homestead holds. This is from the syllabus opinion. It is on page eight. It says, "The issue before the court is a narrow one. In this court, Loesman does not challenge the constitutionality of Florida statute criminalizing disturbances at public assemblies. He does not argue that the statute is overly broad, or that it impermissively targets speech based on its content or viewpoint, or that was enforced in a way that curtailed Loesman's right to peaceful assembly. Loesman furthermore, does not challenge the validity of the city council's asserted limitations on the subjects speakers may discuss during the public comment portion of the city council meetings, although he continues to dispute whether those limitations are in fact existed." Point being, this case does not address the ability to control the topics that speakers speak about at the podium. And it has been the rule, and it continues to be the rule, that when you have a specific topic, you can request that the speaker stay on topic until you get to the general public comment section, which is coming up. And then all the boundaries are different, because it's specifically designed for things that are not on the agenda. So that's the case he cites. I read to you directly from it, so I'm not coloring it. That's what the case says.
All right. Thank you, Cliff. All right. Mayor's report, let's see a couple of things, starting, okay, Monday, September ninth, eleven A M., grand opening of Ale House. So Monday, it will be open, so we're excited for that. Uh, September eleventh is our September eleventh memorial service, right out in front of City Hall, eight thirty A M. A couple other things, we've got the three contests going on, the redesign, the flag redesign contest. So if you've got an idea of what a flag should look like, go on to our happybirthdayapopka.com, flag, backslash, flag, dash, contest, backslash. Uh, also have an essay contest about our, our emblem. So if you, you know, have got the kids out there wanting to do that, that we'd love to have folks to, kids to weigh in on that. Also have the Hispanic Heritage Art Contest, so for students K through five. So be sure to get involved in that. And then obviously, the Hispanic Heritage Festival will be on September the twenty-eighth. Then we've also got, oh, we got A Y C. So we're, we've, we picked up a couple, we're still only at four students. So if you've got anybody that wants to be a, you know, a part of the city A Y C, Apopka Youth Council, we really need you to sign up immediately.
And what's the grade level?
That's juniors and seniors. Magical Dining, I don't know if for people that haven't heard about that, Magical Dining, we got two restaurants in Apopka. It's a pretty prestigious level of restaurants to get to do this. And so we've got Naughty Lobster and Backroom Steakhouse are both in the program. And so what it does, it's a, I think it's a forty dollars meal, including appetizer and dessert. And there's a certain amount of the proceeds go back to, to charities within the central Florida area. And so there's forty or fifty restaurants, I think, in that Magical Dining list. So if you get a chance, go visit R two in Apopka, which is Naughty Lobster and Backroom Steakhouse.
And when is that?
It's a month of September. And I always like to end on a, on a happy note, and I just, I just have to read this. This is pretty, pretty amazing. This is from, well, I'll just say, a lady from Rock Springs Ridge. Hello, I have been a resident of Apopka for seventeen years and have lived in Rock Springs Ridge for the same amount of time. I had a wonderful interaction with an employee this morning, and I wanted to commend him somehow. I wasn't sure who was, who was best to contact, so I thought I'd go all the way to the top at the mayor's office. On my morning walk, I, along with a few other residents, encountered an older gentleman who was clearly disoriented and not supposed to be out for a walk. As some residents and I tried to figure out where he lived and how to get him back home, the City of Apopka garbage truck driver pictured below stopped to help. He had seen this man sitting on the side of the road, and he had also seen someone put a wheelchair out in their trash for pickup. So he went and got it to bring it to the older gentleman. He then also got cold water for him, brought him paper towels to wipe off with, helped direct traffic out of the man's path, and then helped get him in the vehicle when the caregiver arrived to take him home. He was a true blessing and went above and beyond to help us all, but especially this older Apopka resident who was in need. This employee could have easily kept driving and going about his day, but he went out of his way to make a difficult situation much better. I didn't catch his name, but I sincerely hope that he can be located based on this picture below. This took place the morning at ten thirty A M., and this picture was taken at Caledona Avenue in Rock Springs Ridge. I have blurred the faces on the other people for privacy. Thank you. And his name is Charles Rogers. So if you see Charles out there, give him a big shout out, because he's an amazing employee, and we're so proud of the people we have that work here for the City of Apopka. All right. With that, public comment.